It is now eighteen hundred hours. I'm gonna call this regular council meeting twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two to order. The invocation will be provided by Joseph One. Joseph, are you here? I'm looking for Joseph. Is Joseph One here? Okay, I don't see him. So the invocation will be provided by Pastor Mark Miller. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Mike Hammer. Will you all please rise?
Ah, what an opportunity. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, City of Palm Bay. Heavenly Father, we come together today. And I'm speaking on behalf of mighty name of Jesus.
Thank you, Father.
I pray, Lord, for your wisdom, your knowledge and discernment. I pray for your compassion and your love and your mercy and grace to reign in this place today and really forevermore. I pray for, of course, Charlie Kirk's family. I pray for our everyone's family, Lord, that was affected in any way by that tragedy. I pray for this city to come together in one and to, really, Lord, for you to work in our lives to make this the greatest city on the face of the earth. I pray that you will lead us and guide us and direct us, that you will stretch us and grow us, and that we'll be hungry for truth, because it surely has been missing for a long time. And Father, we just give you all the reverence, all the glory, and all the honor in the mighty name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ouro! Roll call.
Mayor Medina.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Present.
Councilman Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Hammer.
Present.
Councilman Landjevan.
Present.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Before we go on to agenda revisions, I want to remind everyone that there is a decorum in these chambers. They are on the screen, they're on what I consider a vision board. Please, let's follow them, because if we get rowdy, this will be a meeting done in order. With that being said, agenda revisions. Mr. Morton.
One second, please, I have some agenda revisions. First of all is, we're gonna strike the presentation tonight regarding-
Sir, can you get closer to the mic, sir?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor of City Council. First revision is we're going to strike the presentation on the Doge Bar Tracker MVP. It's gonna be rescheduled for October second, regular council meeting. At the request of Deputy Mayor Jaffe, there's added discussion regarding planned march honoring Charlie Kirk. It's been added as item under, item three under new business, excuse me. And then we have an applicant here tonight, or an applicant's representative or both, to request a continuation. And I believe the first request that they are going to ask for, and I'd like them to come up and ask for that request, is for public hearings number three, four, five, and six.
Three, four, five, and six? Yes. Okay, step forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Kim Rosanka. I'm here on behalf of Pete Holdings LLC and the Contract Purchaser JKN Acquisitions LLC. This project has been called many things, Miko Village, something in between, and now it's Lotus. This project has been ongoing for a couple of years. There was a problem two years ago with the future land use amendment that was never sent up to this date, which delayed this quite a bit. Lately, we have been working on the development agreement, which was submitted to the staff in February of this year. We didn't receive comments back until July. We turned them back around end of July, and the growth management director did not like them, used went back to her own version, and that was after it had been reviewed by Michael Rodriguez, and then your city attorney reviewed the version that your former growth management director liked, which was not the one we had agreed on with Michael Rodriguez. There's been staff changes, there's been some dispute about what is the proper DA. Regardless, we have two issues remaining on the DA. One is the language for the school concurrency, which we're trying to work through, and your staff has been very deferential to the school board. School board really has no plan for mitigation, and that's part of our struggle. The second issue is the impact fee credits for the St. John's Heritage Parkway, and that is because there's a dispute over what's needed for the project and what's needed for the public. And we are working through those. We are sure we can get them done, but with staff changes and the city attorney changes and the city attorney out of the office for a very well-deserved vacation, we just haven't been able to get it done. I've been told that all of these four items need to travel together, which makes sense. Your code says the DA should be approved with the PUD, and that's what we're trying to do. And I was requested by one of the council members to actually ask for this continuance. So that's why we're asking for it. We believe we can get it all resolved by October sixteenth, and we ask that you just have patience with us and let us work with your staff, which they have been very, they've been trying to work with us, it's just been difficult with things that have been going on.
Yeah, and I understand that, ma'am. So let me, let me stand fast with that October, uh, October second date. Mr. Morton.
Second.
I'm gonna turn to you, because as you know, council has given you in previous meetings opportunities for discussion with, with different developers regarding this, this regional area down in the southeast quarter. So I wanted to, is October second too aggressive? Because I see that we've continued this a few times already, so I want to get to a point where we're discussing this, so that the residents that are coming in for this get an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we'll have the regional discussions with all the different development entities and their representatives by October second. We were supposed to have met already, and it was canceled at least once, potentially twice, by different, you know, groups of that, we're calling the southeast regional zone, this, this future zone of development. So we're looking to reschedule. I don't have a date set yet on the agenda for a replacement meeting to meet with the groups and discuss, you know, the regional issues. I'll just use the term concurrency, even if it's not, you know, officially codified or directly, you know, related in respects, but we do want to talk about the greater traffic, roads, fire, school, infrastructure, correct, yeah. So I don't, I don't know that we'll have that meeting or be prepared. To your point, the applicant requested to extend this to June to July at the PNZ, requested again to extend to July to August, then to August twenty-first. Applicant's third request, August twenty-first to September eighteenth. Fourth request for continuance, September eighteenth, October second. So I don't know if this, if this fourth request is aggressive or if we'll actually meet the timeline.
Yeah, so, and that's, I guess that's, that's my point. I'm trying to get to a place, so what, what do you recommend? Would you, is there a target date that we could probably set a date now? I'm trying to get your feedback as to-
So my sensitivity is just to the community. I'm sure we have people that showed up tonight that, you know, that were expecting to have these items heard, and some others are gonna be requested to be continued. And so I don't want to keep moving dates, right? And so, you know, to be completely safe, probably the first meeting in November, I think, might be realistic. I don't want to go any further than that either. I doubt you do, because I don't want to go into the holidays. That's not fair to the community either, to start going around Thanksgiving or Christmas. People travel, people on vacation. I don't want to see that happen, so I have not had a chance to talk with the applicant's representative or the applicant themselves. I'm looking at our staff workload and some of the meetings and things we're still reconciling and some of the disagreements we're trying to resolve, as was pointed out. And I have a higher degree of confidence, at least from our end, that November is more realistic.
Well, I appreciate that. Ms. Rosanka, would you be amenable to the first meeting in November?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, what date is that, the first meeting in November?
November sixth.
So, counsel, I would need a motion to include November sixth for this, items three, four, five, and six, to be time-certain, the motion to November sixth.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, ma'am, we'll discuss this November sixth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Unless there's an objection, it looks, I think the next one naturally would just follow, can make the request, although I'm assuming it's in alignment. We would do number six, the DA Development Agreement, excuse me, at the same meeting on November sixth.
Yeah. Okay, so you need another motion, because I included in-
Oh, did you? I didn't, I didn't hear that, I apologize.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I, I did. All right, so, counting on-
The applicant for items seven and eight, under public hearings, again, similar situation is here for a project relating to a project called Sancofa Green Estates and has just requested a continuance. I believe that was late yesterday, and they're here to present the, their continuance request to you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Kim Rosanka. I'm here on behalf of David Moaloff and the Contract Purchaser Sancofa Group. This is for a project known as Green Estates. It was first heard at PNZ earlier this month, and this is our first request. At PNZ, we were handed, after our presentation, a traffic analysis by the City Public Works Director. We've gone out to do traffic counts. We just need more time to present that to staff to work out the disagreements on the traffic. According to what the city provided, San Filippo is already failing based upon FDOT counts. Our accounts are showing something different, so we would like chance to resolve that with City Council. The traffic engineer, James Taylor, is on top of this and wants to work with staff. Also, we had requested a meeting with the Deputy City Manager Juliette. We had it set for yesterday due to emergency. We haven't been able to meet with her on this project, so we'd like to have the chance to do that, too. And we had actually asked for October sixteenth, because October second, our expert planner, Jim McKnight, is not available. So we would ask for our first-time continuance to October sixteenth on items seven and eight.
I guess, I'm in the same position, right? I know this is the first request, but Mr. Morton, what are your thoughts about the October sixteenth?
Yes, yes, Honorable Mayor, I believe that the issues that we have to resolve and discuss can more than be accommodated in that timeframe.
I appreciate your candor. So I'll need a motion.
So moved.
I got, got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Smith, any agenda revisions?
No, sir.
Counsel, any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to move all public hearing items prior to public comments, as well as new business, item number three.
In what order? You want to do new business item number three first?
City business first.
Okay, copy that. So I got, so, just so that I get this straight, sir. You want all public hearing items before public comments, and subsequently after the public comments, you want new business item number three to be that last item?
I would prefer after, right after public hearing, new business item number three. I believe most of the public comments would have been around that item.
Okay, so, yeah, after public hearings, new business number three?
Yep.
Okay. So I got a motion by Councilman Johnson. I need a second.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Hammer. Any further discussion, gentlemen? I see none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we revamped the agenda for those of you that are keeping score. So now we're on proclamation, and it is National Service Dog Month. Okay, Rebecca? Come on up and bring, bring up our, our, our service dogs.
Oh, this is great, man. Hey, buddy, how you doing?
So, good evening, folks. It is hereby proclaimed by the Mayor of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and its inclusivity of all citizens. And whereas, in the United States, seventy million adults and children have a disability, and only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited training program exist nationwide, and the need continues to grow. Whereas, Canine Companions created the service dog for people with physical disabilities fifty years ago in nineteen seventy-five, creating a new kind of support for disability. And whereas, Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that embraces the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. And whereas, Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. Whereas, National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting their handlers. Whereas, the City of Palm Bay continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now therefore, I, Ron Medina, Mayor of the greatest city on the face of the earth we call Palm Bay, do hereby virtue of the authority of said office, do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-five as National Service Dog Month in the City of Palm Bay, and encourage all our citizens to celebrate, celebrate tasked-trained dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, afforded to the childrens, and afforded to all veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. In witness whereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Palm Bay to be affixed this eighteenth day of September twenty-twenty-five. Rebecca, come on up. Thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it. If you see us out there, we would love to, if they got on a yellow vest, we'd love to talk to you about our organization. They have one of blue vests, they've actually been placed us one, and they'll talk to you, but, you know, don't distract the service dogs that are working. Thank you so much.
Oh, Kenny? Okay. We're gonna come down. So those of you that keep in score, there is no presentation that was pulled, and so we are now on public hearing item number one, Madam Smith. Oh, as you were, we're on the consent agenda. Counsel?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second. I got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes, any, any oppose? Passes unanimously, five oh. Madam Smith, any-
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-five, as amended by resolutions twenty-twenty-five dash ten, twenty-twenty-five dash twenty, and twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six, adopting the five-year capital improvements program for the fiscal years twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five, through twenty-twenty-eight through twenty-twenty-nine, for the City of Palm Bay, Florida, rescinding resolutions or parsha resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. So now we're on public hearings. Item number one, Madam Smith.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, ammit vacating and abandoning a portion of the rear twenty-foot public utility and drainage easement located within lot eighteen, block twenty-fourteen, Port Malabar Unit forty-six, according to the plot thereof, as recorded in Plat Book Twenty-two, page sixty-one of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and legally described herein, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and defer to Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor of City Council. It is a request to vacate approximately five hundred and forty-four square feet for the purposes of construction of a swimming pool and an enclosure in the backyard.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, counsel? Seeing none? Any questions at all? No? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item?
I'm the property owner.
Well, you want to come up? Come on up, sir.
Sure. How you doing this evening, sir?
Doing well. And you?
Just trying to get a pool put in, that's all.
Sir. Copy that. Copy that. Any, anyone wish to speak for or against this? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman, or Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes unanimously. You got one more go with this, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
We're now on item number two, public hearings, Madam Smith.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash forty, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of the rear twenty-foot public utility and drainage easement located within lot thirty-eight, block four-seven-nine, Port Yaup, Port Malabar Unit twelve, according to the plot thereof, as recorded in Plat Book Fifteen, page fifty-three, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and legally described herein, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor of City Council. Again, a request for vacation of an easement for the purposes of construction of an in-ground swimming pool in the backyard. This would vacate a drainage easement area of approximately six hundred and eighty square feet, and we do have staff here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Please step forward.
We're sort of new to this, so we just want to get a pool built.
What, what's your, okay, so you're the applicant, you Joseph?
We're the homeowners.
Okay. Joseph, is it?
Yes.
All right. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I just, you know.
You need the pool?
Yeah, we need a pool.
Copy that, sir. All right. Let me see if someone else wants to speak for or against this item, and then I may have you come back, okay?
Okay.
All right, sir. Anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hammer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes, any oppose? Passes five zero. You got another bite at this, okay? You passed the first one.
Okay.
All right, congratulations thus far.
Yeah.
All right. We're now on item number three. Madam Smith.
Are we on number nine?
Oh, as you were, three, four, five, and six. Seven and eight. So now we're moving on to nine.
Yes.
Madam Smith.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash forty-three, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the twenty-forty-five comprehensive plan to change the future land use map designation from public semi-public PSP to low-density residential, LDR, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and defer to Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor of City Council. I believe staff has a presentation, correct?
Okay.
Yes.
Carry on, ma'am.
Good evening. For the record, Althea Jefferson, Acting Growth Management Director. Today, we're bringing to you a case that sits on approximately two-point-eight acres. You're probably very familiar with this location. It's the Centerpoint Church. They're located off of Emerson and Mirage Avenue, I'm sorry, Emerald. They're requesting to change the future land use map from public semi-public to low-density residential. This particular lot is ten acres. And we do have provisions for water and sewer services. Staff found the proposal consistent with our comprehensive plan and also consistent with the review criteria that we call the factors of analysis. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended that the City Council approve this request.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of staff, counsel? I'm gonna ask the applicant to present their case.
Wait, one question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What was, what was the vote for planning and zoning?
Four to one.
Four to one, thank you. For approval, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Bill Price. I am with Price Family Homes. We are representing the purchaser and developer, working with Centerpoint to rezone, or in this case, change the land use of this property. It's currently public semi-public, and we're asking to change it to low-density residential, so primarily so we be permitted to build residences on that property. And I appreciate staff's report and recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
So I do have a question. So, of course, you know, this is just the first part of that. The, the other is the ten acres, right? Subsequently, coming on, you, you're, you're gonna be joining these together, is that correct?
The, the ultimate goal for the whole project, both, both this number nine and number ten together, would be to make a single development, yes.
I see. And so, and, and I've been pretty consistent since I've been on this council. I know Dep, or Councilman Johnson and I have disagreed on this a few times, but he's, he's come on board sometimes. Why not make or build one-acre estate homes? That, that is the density that I, I feel comfortable with, right? Make something really nice within that area. So why, why wouldn't you guys want to do something like that?
Well, in areas like Grant or outside of Palm Bay, where you have a lot more of those type of homes, you get the value for them when you sell them. But in the middle of Palm Bay, surrounded by the neighborhoods that it's surrounded by, you, you can only get so much value for the land itself. And if you were to cut this up into one-acre pieces, you wouldn't be able to achieve the economic realities that are necessary to make it a viable project.
Yeah, that's, I believe, and, you know, ideology-wise, you know, I believe that that's where the downfall has come, where we've lost those one-acre opportunities. But any other questions from counsel while, while the applicant is up here? Okay. Carry on, sir. No questions.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? By show of hands? Your number, okay. So raise those hands, please. All right, thank you. You're number one.
I can actually let my pastor go number one, because I'm in charge.
Oh, yes, okay. Oh, Pastor, Pastor Walker, I didn't even see you back there. Come on up, Pastor Walker. And then, so, just put, put your hands up. I've got Pastor Walker, you're next in yellow. I saw someone raise their hand on that. I saw someone raised their hand on that. You're- you're after young lady in yellow, sir. Okay, the first three. You're four. Carry on, sir.
Mayor, Councilman. Nice to be with you. Thank you very much for having us. Appreciate you hearing our request. I have a- Pastor Delgado sent me his- his support and a letter of support. He didn't get it in on time. I brought a copy for you if you wanted one. But allow me just to read something that I sent to each one of you. I'm not sure you got a chance to read it. Maybe you did, maybe you didn't. But I wanted to read it for all that are listening as well, so I can just get it on the record. My name is Reverend Tom Walker. And while I'm not a resident of Palm Bay, I've been pastoring Center Point Church for twenty years. For almost forty years, Center Point, formerly Zion Christian Church, has been a vital part of this community. Over the years, the church has grown in numbers and grown in community involvement. I believe our- our impact can only grow stronger. The facilities we have presently hinder that impact. We have elected to sell thirteen-plus acres of our undeveloped property to help fund our needed expansion. We chose to sell price- to price homes because of the quality of their work, knowing it would only enhance the surrounding community. As you know, the property is currently zoned for rural use only. That zoning no longer reflects the urban neighborhoods that surrounds the church. Not only would this change strengthens Palm Bay's tax base, but would also address the homeless problem that we and our neighbors continually wrestle with. Our intention is to expand our impact by enlarging and improving our campus. We will erect a five-hundred-seat sanctuary with modern technology. It will be a multi-use room with large foyer that would be available for the greater Palm Bay community to make use of. We will redesign our present facility to a large youth center and expanded children's wings, giving both children and teenagers a self- a safe, healthy, and spiritually sound place to congregate. We are doing all of this for one reason. It is our mandate to introduce people to Jesus Christ. With all the chaos happening in the world in Brevard County and some even here at home, the church's influence has to grow. Not just our church, but all Christ-centered churches. I'm asking you to help Center Point do our part in supporting the small-scale comprehensive land use. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pastor Tom, and it's great to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Ma'am, you're- you're next.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council. My name is Virginia Sierra, and I moved here in two thousand and four. My husband, a Marine Corps veteran, and I moved here with our brand-new baby girl. And like many families, we came here for work with no family and no ties. Center Point Church became that tie for us. We have been a member there for seventeen years and currently serve as the interim children's directors. Center Point has served Palm Bay for over thirty-five years, hosting numerous public outreach events, providing a home for families like mine. The land in question has been owned for over twenty-five years and has remained undeveloped and untaxed during this time. The potential new homes could bring an annual revenue to Palm Bay of over two hundred thousand dollars. We previously considered selling to a developer, planning apartments, but after hearing the community's concerns, the contract fell through. We listened, and this time, we selected Price Family Homes, a local builder with ties to the Palm Bay community. We believe they will develop the land in a way that is respectful to the neighborhood. However, the sale does depend on the rezoning. Without it, Center Point cannot move forward with the plans that we have to expand our current facility and outreach. The proceeds will fund a new sanctuary, allowing us to convert our current building into a dedicated children and youth center. The space is urgently needed. We run programs like The Big Idea in local schools, teaching virtues like courage, respect, and perseverance to elementary students. We host Embrace Grace and Embrace Life, supporting expectant and single mothers with resources within the community. We are committed to transparency. The sale isn't just about land. It's about investing in Palm Bay's future. We respectfully ask for your support in proving the rezoning. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. The young man back there, you're- you're up.
Council members, thank you for hearing- hearing me. My name is Briar Winnatt, and I live directly backed up to this property. Money. That's what this proposition comes down to. Price Family Homes will claim that this development is aimed to improve the community. Center Point Church will try to tug at heartstrings, spin truths, and make lofty claims that this is meant to help the community's children. But that is not why either of them stand before you today. They're here only for self-serving reasons. They see an opportunity to make a buck, and they are more than willing to take it at the expense of the rest of us. Money has nothing to do with why I stand before you, nor the other members of the neighborhood who are here. We, as actual taxpayers, come here today to protect the long-term integrity of this community. Anyone who has spent time on our street can plainly see that this development makes no sense in this location, and it doesn't take a bankrolled so-called expert to tell us so. If this were truly going to benefit our community, we would be here championing the cause, but we are forced to stand and fight. Representatives of Center Point Church stood in this very chamber just a couple weeks ago and lied, stating how they chose this particular builder because they care about us and want to help preserve our neighborhood as much as possible, as if they did not just try to sell this same land off to a mega-developer for an apartment complex. It was only thanks to the diligent and thoughtful representatives of both this council and the zoning board that it was stopped. If you visit the church's website right now, there is a video available to show what the church plans to do with the money from the sale of this land. They plan to build a megachurch-style building, complete with a coffee shop, air hockey table, and a movie theater. To them, this is well worth the price of my neighborhood. And would these areas be accessible to the community? No. Only if you join their congregation and give ten percent of your income in a tithing, as is recommended on their website. Money that goes straight into the church's pockets. The church also tries to use the homeless, who sometimes camp on this land, as a justification for its development. But they could easily do as anyone else in this neighborhood would to secure their property and build a fence. The church would only consider solutions that they won't be required to contribute to. All they've tried thus far is using the Palm Bay Police Force's valuable time and resources, which they do not pay taxes for, to do what they should be doing themselves. Their lack of accountability is not a reason to approve this development. And so, I urge this council to side with the constituency and not with the sellers or developers who will not have to live with the repercussions of this proposition, as we will. I have been made aware of much of the good work this council has done lately. Would like to thank you for it and ask that you continue with that good work by voting no on this zoning change and no to the development as a whole. A yes here is a permanent and will forever reshape this city for the worse. Voting nay leaves this land open for future usage in a way that would actually work with the existing zoning of the community and integrate with the neighborhood around in a cohesive way.
Your time is up, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next speaker? There was a- there was a- someone with a hat on this side. Was that you? You're next. Keep your hands up, folks, so that way I start numbering you. This gentleman, you're next. Then you're Ms. Trammell, you're next. And then Roof, you're after Ms. Trammell. Well, we don't need the cards, ma'am.
You need the cards for item number ten.
That's for ten.
Item number nine, you- you get called to the podium.
Well, ma'am, I'll explain it later. But for number nine, you don't need a card. For number ten, you would. I'm sorry, sir, carry on.
Don Scoboe, two-two-two Cavern Avenue, southeast Palm Bay. And you're gonna put this in my backyard. What I wanted to say was, first of all, look at the road. You're gonna put these cars coming out into a side street. Not- not Malabar Road. We're going to a side street. There's a house right across the street, thirty feet away. So let's say seven-ten o'clock in the morning, we'll put twenty cars going out there, making a right turn, trying to get around Copley where the church is, or Douglas, and then pop out onto Malabar Emerson Drive. And if you're heading north, you ain't never gonna get there because this morning, I do head south. So I see what's coming north, okay? If you were on Jupiter at seven o'clock this morning, you did not get to Malabar Road till at least twenty after. You had at least three traffic lights. Make that right turn, start heading towards ninety-five. You now have San Filippo coming into there, which is also backed up at that time in the morning. You have Babcock coming into Malabar, heading towards ninety-five. So how are you gonna get all these people out here? Last time we were here, no one- no one asked how much traffic is gonna be coming through that neighborhood. They didn't say that. And someone said that it was, um... It was approved the last time? Wasn't approved. I was here two weeks ago. They voted no on that. I saw the vote. So I don't know who's saying it's approved. They voted no at that time, unless I'm wrong, and I was at the wrong meeting, but I was here. Also, the priest, the pastor, does not live in my neighborhood. The woman who was here before, she does not live in my neighborhood. The builder does not live in my neighborhood. Where are the people from Center Port Church that live in my neighborhood that are here tonight to say, "This is good for you, Don. This is gonna make your house better. This is gonna make your whole neighborhood better." Where are those people? Why is it only the people that are standing here, live outside the neighborhood, telling me what's good for my neighborhood? Look at the road coming out. If there's a fire, who gets to ride away? The people who are burning, coming out? Or the fire truck going in to stop the people from burning? We're not dealing with Malabar Road or even Emerson. We're dealing with like a two-lane nothing. And that road they're dumping you out on is probably only thirty feet wide, maybe thirty feet wide, okay? So you're gonna drive these cars right into this guy's driveway? And you think that's fair to the neighborhood? If it's one-acre zoning, let them put in there eight houses or seven houses. The last time, the builder even said, "Oh, how do I get a..." He had to go for an extra zoning, he said, which he didn't have yet, for another road for a fire truck to come in and out of. Where's that zone? When did he get that? He didn't get it yet. He even admitted it, asking him to come back up here. He said the last time, right in front of us, that he did not have another way in and out of there, that he was gonna have to ask for another zoning variance after you approve this. I mean, what are we doing here? I mean, if there's a fire, who's gonna pay for these kids that they die back there? Has anybody done a traffic report on these twenty or thirty cars at seven o'clock in the morning hitting Emerson? I didn't see no traffic report. No one's done it yet, why?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who was next? Was that, sir? In the black shirt, you were next. And then Ms. Trend? And then Roof.
Good evening, my name is Mayor and council members. My name is Brian Humphries. I live at nine-six-seven Emerald Road. Actually, border both these developments here. I'm the last lot on the block. I'm here to respectfully ask you to vote no on CP twenty-five zero-zero-three. The request is to amend the comprehensive plan from semi-public to low-density. The public semi- the public semi-public designation is not only a label exists to ensure certain parcels remain dedicated to the community's serving uses, churches, schools, or civic facilities. When I built my home, I relied on this designation. I understood that the church might expand, and I accepted that. Because this serves the public, what I did not expect was for this land to be flipped to private development to become homes. Approving this amendment undermines the integrity of the comprehensive plan. Neighbors make life decisions based on these land use maps. If PSP can be converted- or converted to residential whenever convenient, then the plan becomes meaningless. That erodes trust. Approving this amendment undermines integrity, sorry. The land also functions as a green space buffer. PSP properties often provide separation between neighborhoods and more intense uses. Often, this designation is changed, or once this designation is changed, that buffer is gone. What was meant to remain a community-serving, open-edged will instead become driveways and rooftops. This is being described as just eight homes, but it cannot be separated from the forty-one lot subdivision tied to ZP twenty-five, or Z twenty-five zero-zero-three. CP twenty-five is a doorway to this project, despite the fact that Planning and Zoning Board already recommended this denial for the zoning, for the rezon. The comprehensive plan is meant to ensure stability, consistency, and community belief, or benefit. Approving CP twenty-five zero-three disregards that purpose and sets precedent to institutional land that can be liquidated for private gain. For the sake of the plant- or good planning and public trust, I urge, respectfully urge you, to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trendo? Oh, come on up.
Well, I wasn't planning on talking about this, but it goes right to what my public comments card was going to be about. Senate Bill one-eighty made it very strict on changing your land use for rezoning and everything else. This could very well start, well, let me say, SB one-eighty allows any property owner to sue the local government if decisions are made that they dislike. That means anybody. By changing your land use, your rezoning, your comprehensive plan, you may be open to a lawsuit. And so, I'm just bringing that. And also, I watch planning and zoning. I believe they denied this. I think it was four to one. But anyway, that's, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I have a public comments on SB one-eighty, so that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Cuffold?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and Staff, Palm Bay, Florida. My name is Ruth Cuffold, and I reside at nine-thirty-five Douglas Street, Southeast. My name is Ruth Cuffield and I reside at nine-thirty-five Douglas Street Southeast. Recent history of Centerpoint Church and its sincerity...
Ma'am, you want to speak on the record there?
Last time, we wanted to talk about the sincerity and the community mindness of this church. Previously, they wanted to put in four large buildings equal to one-hundred-and-ninety-two units, equal to three-hundred-and-eighty-four cars running through our neighborhood. We got that rejected. Today, we're looking at this picture, which is not the same picture that's in your packet for the current thing that the builder wants to do. This is the picture that was supposed to go with us at the meeting. That's the only picture that I brought today and the staff does not have it in stock right now. So, thank you, Butch. The Centerpoint Church wants to build a new building for over three million dollars, but to achieve that, it needs to sell a twelve-acre property for at least one-point-five million dollars, putting the church in debt. The current building has been maintained at least amount effort to pass inspection. This is my experiences with the church. I'm just going to tell you that. The food bank was shut down and, to my knowledge, has not been restarted. The building that the food bank didn't use was torn down due to disrepair. Backpack program that served the community has yet to be restarted, to my knowledge. The representatives from the church claim to rebuild the playground if the rezoning is passed. Why hasn't the church rebuilt the playground already? It was a good addition that was used by the community, was torn down to disrepair prior to twenty-two. Current lift station that the church is responsible for maintaining is in constant state of disrepair. The property identified for a new HOA currently has a homeless problem. The church wants to sell the property to alleviate itself of being responsible neighbor by pushing this problem into our neighborhood. I received a notice from another builder that they want to sell the property, build eight houses and an HOA with only twenty-six houses, but the builder claims that this must be designed that way due to Florida law. That specific law has not been identified. If it sells the property, the homeless problem will then be a problem of our neighborhood and our safety will be in jeopardy. Instead of clearing the land and maintaining it as a good neighbor is supposed to do, we believe the pattern of neglect will continue and the lip service being given will result in no neighborly actions and we will be left with the mess. The staff agree on this, did so in error, as there are two totally different pictures in the project packet, and there have been no disclosures to the future residents that the HOA would be actually paying for. Please reject both. Ordinance has changes. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Yes, sir. Show of hands, who wants to speak next after this gentleman? Okay. All right, Bill, you're next, and the young lady behind you is after you. Pat, I couldn't see. Carry on, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Petty. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and just give my input regarding this development plan. I was here two weeks ago as things were discussed and wanted to clarify some of the things that were part of that discussion because I know part of that committee even expressed not fully understanding what it was and being confused about the situation. First of all, the total development, including the eight lots that are on Emerald, the total is forty-one houses. So it's not forty-one houses in that ten-acre parcel that is behind. The eight along Emerald are part of that. And my understanding is that rural residential would allow us to develop as many as ten homes on that property of the ten acres as well. So simply what we are asking is to increase that by twenty-three homes. That is the total sum of change that we are requesting in this. Whether it is the thirty-three homes that go behind or it is the ten homes, an access road will have to go in either way. That cannot be worked around. And I know, I understand the passion of wanting to leave as much green there as possible. It is not within the church's plan to eliminate all the green. The trees that you see behind those eight parcels, that area, that is not currently planned to have any development or change on it. So there would be greenery remaining that would stay part of that community. It is the ten acres that is being developed that we are really focusing on. And while plans have changed, it has not been to the benefit of the church because the offers that we had received before were more than twice as much as what we are agreeing to, to sell the land for at this point in time. So we did listen to the community and make those changes so that this development would fall in line with single-story homes like the rest of the community and fit in appropriately. I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
So just a second, I have a question.
Sure.
So what we're talking about, it's the property in its entirety. I know this is just one item. It's just one piece of that. Then comes the ten acres, right? But this is where it's part of the comp plan that it shouldn't be. So my question would be, they are one-acre lots, right? Item number ten, the ten acres are one acre.
Ten acres could currently be one-acre lots.
They are one-acre lots, the way it stands, right? So my question is, right, and I asked Mr. Price, right, or the gentleman that represents Price Homes.
Sure.
In the discussions that you had, did you consider half-acre lots?
I cannot say that I was part of the discussion at that point in time.
Okay.
To know, or remember the full details. When you talk about having lots to do twenty instead of ten.
Correct.
I don't know that we ever had a builder that decided that it would even be worth that size development, so I can't, can't tell you for sure what that discussion was.
You can't answer that. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Mr., sir, you have a question for him? Sir, come on back. Sir? You got another question. Councilman Ham.
Sure. Was there a thought of making it something that the community needs, like a school? Or possibly some kind of business that's faith-based?
Business that is faith-based? No, that has not been part of the discussion. I'm going to mention something here that I wasn't really planning on talking about and might get daggers from my pastor here at the moment. The only other thing that we are aware of that would be open to us, that even has people willing to consider, if we are not able to do this, then we do not have another means that a development seems reasonable to a builder at this time. And because we believe that we are called to continue to serve this community and grow this ministry, the next thing that we would have to evaluate would be the yes-in-God's-backyard approach, which is a law that came into effect this year that the state passed that significantly reduces zoning restrictions and would allow us to develop that as affordable housing development. And that's not been our first focus because I don't think the community representatives would like that either, but that would be a higher density and affordable housing.
Stand fast. I've got Deputy Mayor Jaffe has another question.
Really, mine's more just a statement. When the comprehensive plan was changed and the LDC code was updated, you're not allowed to build a school on this property.
Okay, as you were. Carry on, sir.
Thanks.
Bill Batten, five-eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. So when you start changing from public and semi-public land and you start changing it into residential land, first thing that's going to happen is your density has, your density is going to increase. But thinking about that constantly, I hear councils saying, where is our church going to be? You know me, I'm not that big religious person, but I do know that, I'll speak in the mayor's behalf in this case, he's constantly asking about, for more churches. So if you change that public and semi-public land to low-density residential, there's no chance of building a church there ever. That's the first one. The next question would be, since this was for the sale to build something else on Centerpoint Church, what was the land sale? What was the amount of the land sale profit or the cost of it that they got? Would that, if they would have just sold the land for keeping, keeping the land for another church or sell the land to a private individual, they could still get the same amount of money without having to change the density of the church. They would meet their objective and the residents would meet their objective if you didn't change it. So just for curiosity's sake, keep it down, keep it zoned as public and semi-public. That way you can have a church on it. And then when you go to the ten acres, which is another vote coming up, go ahead and keep that rural residential, because I promise you, there are several people that would love to have one-acre rent sites around this town that they could enjoy. It's a nice location. People say, I wish I had more land. So what do they end up having to do? They have to buy two or three lots, fifty thousand dollars a lot, when they could have bought one acre for forty thousand dollars. Just keep that in mind, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Show of hands, who was speaking? Young lady back there? Oh, Pat. Pat was up. So keep, ma'am? Ma'am, are you in green?
Yes.
Okay. So you're next, and then the young lady to my left. You're after the young lady in green. Thank you, ma'am. Carry on, Pat.
Good evening. Pat Dalper, four-ten George's Avenue, Northeast. I am a member of Centerpoint. I don't have a problem with church growth, but I'm also and have been a neighborhood advocate since 2020 because of what was going on in my neighborhood. I spent time at the comprehensive meetings. I've spent time here at city council meetings, and I hear you, Mayor, talking about acre lots, talking about better land. We weren't supposed to be changing zoning. So in the past several months, we've had questions to change the zoning. And we keep talking about changing the zoning. Why can't we just keep the comprehensive plan as is? And the other thing I was going to bring up, and I think it'll be in the next round, it's about the impact this is going to have on the water and sewer in the neighborhood, not just the traffic, not just safety or one-way in or out, but we got a water and septic problem. So I've already spoken to the pastor about what my thoughts are. I believe the church should keep the land and grow with it.
Thank you. Next speaker? Ma'am?
My name is Denise Billets and I reside at two-two-two Cavern Avenue. My back porch looks out onto the other high-rise that got part of the church's land. I want to say, and I'm a little nervous, but I was at the P&amp;Z meeting two weeks ago. It was a very, very good meeting and there was a lot of back and forth and back and forth. However, at the very, very end, one of the, one of the committee members spoke about green areas in Palm Bay, how there are very few green areas in Palm Bay and that we should cherish the ones that we could possibly have. I would like to recommend if there's a possible way, if the city might consider themselves purchasing the property and putting a park there, neighborhood park. There is not a neighborhood park for that subdivision or that area at all. And I'm thinking that the nearest park is over, across Emerson, Downways. So if there was a need to have something that would benefit everybody, I really think that maybe the city could look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're next.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Shawnee Winnett and I'm a homeowner on Emerald Road. This piece of land is not just another vacant lot. It is the last natural barrier separating Palm Bay's commercial corridor from our neighborhoods. Once this barrier is gone, there is no clear line between commercial sprawl and residential living. Zoning decisions like this one permanently reshape the character of our city, and I ask you to continue or to consider the long-term consequences. Not to be a broken record, but traffic and infrastructure. Adding forty homes will absolutely impact traffic. The small residential roads in this area were never designed for that burden. There are no sidewalks, no streetlights, not even enough width for two cars to pass safely. Hundreds of new daily trips will funnel through already strained streets, slowing response, raising accident risks, and eventually forcing costly upgrades taxpayers will have to cover. Next, light and noise pollution. This land currently serves as a buffer, softening the sounds and lights from the Malabar commercial area. If it's replaced with a subdivision, residents will not only endure years of noisy construction, but will permanently lose that shield. Construction noise, traffic, and lighting will intrude deeper into neighborhoods, reducing privacy, lowering property values, and making this area less desirable to live. Third, economic and community character. This is one of the few remaining green spaces in this part of Palm Bay, home to wildlife, including the gopher tortoise. Infill development in sensitive habitats can actually be more destructive than sprawl because it wipes out the last green islands that keep these local populations viable. These animals cannot simply relocate. Displacement leads to collapse and residents are left with more nuisance wildlife, hotter temperatures, and increased flood risks. Green space is not a luxury. It provides critical cooling, drainage, and quality of life for all residents. I also understand the concern about homeless individuals occasionally camping here, but development would only be displacement. It does nothing to resolve homelessness. These individuals will simply be homeless and burden the community the next street over. They'll simply be forced to move. A more effective solution would be to partner with social services and not erase one of the last natural buffers our city has. Zoning is about balance, about making choices that protect residents, preserving quality of life, and ensuring long-term sustainable growth, approving the rezoning tips that balance in the wrong direction. Just because land appears vacant certainly does not mean it's unused. It's providing ecological, economic, and community value that once lost cannot be replaced. I urge you, please preserve this property at its current zoning. Keep the barrier between commercial and residential intact and protect both the people and wildlife of Palm Bay. Do not curve, cave to their threats to sidestep the will of this council and press on regardless. We will continue to fight this as long as you continue to fight for us. Please deny this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker? Does that conclude the speakers? Pastor Walker, you have an opportunity to rebut.
I'll wait.
Or Mr. Price. Come on up. Do you have questions?
I'll wait till after I everybody speaks. Appreciate it again. Thank you for your time. I understand the community's concerns. You know, they were there first and now I'm coming along, going to disrupt their lives with, like they said, years of construction and equipment coming in, man material, but at the end of it, what's going to be left is a beautiful subdivision, a community, adding to the community, increasing their property values, increasing the character, matching the character of the surrounding community. The land that's there is not being put to its highest and best use, you know, by coming in and putting in homes for more families for Palm Bay, which we're always in ever need of, it seems. I feel like I'm really serving my community in that purpose. I do know the concerns you shared about the one-acre lots. It's not just that it's, I want to expand on my economic viability. You're required to provide sewer services and the costs of providing those services would be burdensome at the price of the land value, would make those individual one-acre lots very much outside the realm of anything that would be reasonable in Palm Bay because of how much that land itself would cost to develop, to build the one-acre lots. Again, I really appreciate y'all considering this, but the main, the main objective here is just to improve the community by building some nice homes and helping out the church to develop their community programs as well.
So would half-acre lots not be financially viable for you as well?
Just to be honest, which I am, I'm an honest guy, it's marginally viable as it is, very much so. And I'm really counting on the fact that I build very quality homes. I'm going to attract the type of residents to Palm Bay that are, that are going to be able to afford to purchase them. I'm really, you know, it's, to do half-acre lots, you need an even higher, you know, an even higher price point where you're getting like, like on the barrier islands type of price point. Unfortunately, it's a reality, most of the developers that came before me, they talked about, they turned down a apartment complex, you know, and there's developers that were going to do like planned developments. I'm just doing straight zoning. I'm going to match the character of the surrounding area. I'm going to build the type of homes of the neighbors that are here tonight. I'm not, I'm not trying to build small forty-foot lots, fifty-foot lots with tiny shotgun shell homes. This is, this is exactly like the neighborhood that's around it. And in fact, it's going to be better in the neighborhood. It's a planned community and HOA. It's got retention, a walking path, nice landscaping, and I'm going to put a fence around it too, around the whole thing, just to provide that buffer and barrier that, you know, will be removing the trees and taking that away from the community.
Are there any other questions, Counselor? Deputy May or Councilman Joseph?
I'm good. I don't want that title.
I looked at him, as you were, I looked at him, I thought...
You know, so my comments, I'm good with you, sir. You're good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who spoke. One thing, I wanted to make sure I had, gave staff the opportunity to clarify on the planning and zoning vote first. And then secondly, there was something mentioned. I appreciate you mentioning it, sir, because it ties to the Live Local Act and I would love for our staff, both our city attorney and Mr. Morton, our city manager, to speak on it as well, because I think it's very crucial information for this public to hear as well as this council. So that's all.
Carry on.
Thank you, sir. So first, I want to say, there are two separate parcels. The one that we just had the public hearing on, which is the smaller one, I misspoke before, I said ten acres, it's two-point-eight acres, that was recommended for approval by the planning and zoning board, because right now, in fact, the zoning and the future land use are incompatible.
Okay, thank you.
For the larger properties, it's actually a couple of properties, the ten acres, that was a rezoning, which was recommended that the city council deny that request. So it's two separate requests. With regard to Live Local, one of the speakers mentioned that the law has changed this past legislative session. So now, any properties owned by a church or anything that's zoned industrial, commercial, would be allowed to build the highest density permitted within the city on such properties, and that would be done administratively. And they can do this based on Live Local law without either one of these... And they can do this based on Live Local law without either one of these applications. It would just be an administrative process whereby they would be permitted to build the highest density allowed in the city, which is 40 units to the acre. And they also would be allowed to build up to the highest allowed height within the city. And, and they'd be able to do that without this process. In truth, the, again, the land, the land use is incompatible with the current zoning for that small piece.
And so I know that this council has, you know, repeatedly discussed being exempt from the Live Local.
From the tax incentives offered to the builders of these types of properties. You all did last December make a decision not to offer those tax incentives for these type of parcels, but by law, we're required to allow the housing on church-owned properties.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I, I've got Councilman Hammer and then Mr. Morton. Mr. Morton, would you?
Yeah, I wanted him to speak first.
Okay. Mr. Morton, would you weigh in?
Althea is right. I think the only caveat that I'm aware of, Tricia might know more, is that the property has to have a church on it, which it does, so that, I don't think applies in this case. So I think your, your position is correct. So it's not just any church-owned property in the city. It has to be, have a church on it, which it does. It does now comply as of July under the Live Local Act. They could build multifamily. They could build it tall, and she gave you the density, I think it was 40 units an acre. So that is, that is permissible administratively now by the state of Florida on this property, if that's what they choose to do in the future.
Copy that. Councilman Hammer?
Oh, oh.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, I do want to point out that they change was to 166.04151, and it's subsection six. And I only want to point that out because subsection six, which I will read, is different from the administrative process, which is in subsection seven. The subsection six provides, of course, notwithstanding any other law or local ordinance or regulation to the contrary, the governing body of a municipality may approve the development of housing that is affordable. And it goes on, on any parcel, including contiguous parcel connected there too, which is owned by a religious institution, which contains a house of public worship, regardless of underlying zoning, so long as at least 10% of the units included in the project are for housing that is affordable. The administrative process is under subsection seven, which says that a municipality must authorize. So I do want to make that distinguishment, but certainly, they can have a Live Local project, which would include multifamily, as long as 10%, just under the current law isn't an administrative process, it's something that the governing body of a municipality may approve.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I thought that was very crucial information for everybody to have in regards to the decision we're making tonight, Mayor. So that's all.
So part of that too is something's coming before us, that they want us to, to work those, to waive those things off on, on the property. Since we're talking apples to apples, I want to just throw that out there, right? They want us to exempt their percentage of affordable housing in that development that was administratively done over there by the hotels. And what is that, jump around?
Defy.
Bass Pro Shop, that area, defy? That project was Live Local, and now this, they're, they're coming back to get some type of waiver. Am I correct?
Well, that's, that's business item number one.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I, since we're talking down that same vein, Deputy Mayor, you're next. Oh, as you were.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was just going to mention that.
Okay.
Business item number one.
Councilman Hammer?
Yes, if City Manager, Mr. Morton, could call Althea back up for a second, I had a question.
Sure. Althea?
From what I'm reading, in 2029 and 2030, the school for that district is going to be at a negative three capacity for students. Is that correct?
The high school can accommodate the projected students, but the elementary and middle schools did have to, in order to accommodate the students generated for this number of units, they did have to go within the next or the adjacent capacity area, which would be not the school zoned for this specific site, but the next elementary or middle school that can accommodate them.
Okay, my question also is Palm Breeze Apartments is 264 apartments, which is also zoned for that same school. They did these numbers without including that because no one's moved in yet. Are those included in that or not?
The school board does the calculations in terms of the generation of the students, and it's done with what's called a preliminary letter. So when they get to site plan, then they reevaluate it again based on all of the products and developments that have been built since, and people have started moving in. So it was a preliminary letter from the school board that made that determination.
So they basically do account of what the kids are in there currently?
Yes.
Okay, so we have 264 people, or 264 apartment or dwellings that are moving in that we're not even accounting for in this?
They've, they've been accounted for when they were in this part of the process and/or when they started their site plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I would like to just say, I, I, I love Price Family Homes. They've always done great work from what I've seen. I love Center Point. But I truly believe our city is at a point to where I think we are at capacity. We are at capacity.
Let me, sir, sir, let me, let me close the public hearings and, and get a motion. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves at this point. So the very first thing is, no one else is wishing to speak at this time. Mr. Walker? You already spoke. So I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-43.
I'll second it. I got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Mayor, like, the Live Local Act is the main thing that has me of the, the greatest concern, because anything can be built. Like, we're talking about, right here, we're talking about a limited amount of houses that are going to conform to the community, where it could go back to not just what was proposed previously with the apartments, but something even more. And every time an affordable housing project is brought before this council, it's been a problem. And here, it wouldn't be brought to the council. It'll be handled administratively. And I've seen projects that have been handled administratively where I wish I would have had a say in it, and that's the price of, you know, preemptions from the state. They think every city is the same, and we're dealt with the same stuff, but each project is different, which is why they need to come here. But if we don't approve it, I'm not doing it out of fear, it's more of prudence and foresight, but if we don't approve it, then it's, not saying that Pastor will do it, but he has full range to do whatever you have, you want to do, sir. And that's, it's your property. We can't talk about property rights on one side, but then when it comes to other people's property rights, we want to infringe on them. So it goes both ways. I, I think this is very feasible, especially considering what they could have done. We're speaking about this project first, so I want to make sure I stay on this project. Planning and zoning approved it. I feel comfortable approving this first one, and we'll talk about the next one when we get there. But that's where I'm at, Mayor.
I've got the city attorney weighing in. Madam Attorney?
Only just to clarify again, Live Local, it could do an apartment, but it would not be administrative.
Okay, it won't.
But they very well could, under Live Local, do an apartment.
Okay.
And then it would have to be brought back to here, correct?
Yeah, but it wouldn't require them to do any land use or zoning, and all they'd have to do 10% as affordable, and they could do a Live Local project. So everything else, absolutely correct.
And that's still a concern. All right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I support this project. It's a small-scale comprehensive plan change. The comprehensive plan is, is a guide, but we have this process to allow people to come in and submit and prove their case while others prove the opposing side, and then we have to make a decision. You know, based on the factors of analysis, this does meet the transportation and utilities concurrency. You know, somebody came up and spoke about Senate Bill 180, which has to do with moratoriums and emergencies during hurricanes, has nothing to do with anything related to this property. You know, this property was previously under contract by a multifamily developer. Residents are claiming that they, they stopped the development of it, but that previous developer actually pulled the project at the P&amp;Z meeting that was never voted upon. And, but, you know, furthermore, I just, I support this project, this eight houses on Emerald. I think it makes sense, so that'll click pass.
Right, thank you. I've got Councilman Hammer and then Councilman Landevan.
Yeah, like I was saying before, I really love both involved, but what I also would like to point out, that the community surrounding your church does not like it. And I drive down Emerson every single day to take my kid to school. Emerson is backed up all the way to Jupiter. It takes me seven minutes to get to my kid's school when, at, at midnight. Takes me 32 minutes to get to my kid's school when I'm taking him to school. When I come here, it takes me almost seven minutes to get here from my house. Today, it took me 31 minutes. I love everything about the project, other than it's a development that's pouring out onto a residential road. And while I was running for council, I said we should never have a, a development that pours out onto a two-lane road. I don't think it's very intelligent, and I, there's not even, there's not even a light at Copley where this comes out. So we have to bring everybody out on Copley and just hope and pray they can make it across. I love the idea for it. I, I, I think it's a great start. I, I really hope we can come up with a better idea for it. I don't like it pouring out into, onto the middle of somebody's road where the kids play. We're talking about 40 houses. That's, that's, that's 80 cars going up and down a, a road. That means a kid can't have a basketball hoop in, in, in the road. Kids can't ride their bikes. It's, it's, I'm, I'm not going to be in support of it. I support the church. I support Price Family. I think you guys are doing great things. I think the church has, 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 I mean, if you're expanding, I'm, 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 I'm happy you have the, the attendance you do. I really do. If it's that, I mean, you know, being a church, your community around you is not in support, and I, I would, I would love to come up with another way, but I, I can't be in support of this tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Landevan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be in support of this tonight, and the reason is the same as everyone else's reason. Honestly, it, I probably wouldn't have been in support of it if the state hadn't have passed the Live Local Act, but if we deny 40 family homes tonight, and then an apartment complex is built that can hold, you know, 250 people, and now we have that much more congestion going on there, and we had no say-so in it, then I would feel much worse than just allowing the, the houses to be built. So I'm going to be a yes tonight. But I would encourage everyone who's going to be mad at us tonight for approving this to, does anyone go and yell and, and complain to their state officials? Because we didn't pass Live Local. We're having to deal with the consequences of it. There's a number of other items that we didn't pass that we're having to deal with the consequences of. We spent a meeting getting yelled at about final plats. We had nothing to do with that. We, we have to comply with the state. But they sit up in Tallahassee, seven or eight hours away, and they don't have to worry about getting complained to about that. So, you know, we, we share our fair amount here, and, and you should come complain to us about certain things for sure, but I would encourage you to also go complain to your state officials, because it, it's easy to just go up to Tallahassee and get away from all this and let the city councils get the brunt of it. So that's all. I'm going to be in favor tonight.
Well, thank you, Councilman Landevan. And I, I'll wrap this up. The very first thing I want to share is someone mentioned the tithe and, and kind of like cast some shade on the church, so I'm, I'm going to, the tithe is not of the church of Center Point. The tithe is a promise from the Most High God, and he says, "Test me in this." So there are people that believe in God's word, and so they declare that their promises, or God's promises are true, yes and amen. So the tithe has nothing to do with a local church, but the body of Christ, and it is a promise. And so, so that, ma'am, as you were, ma'am, excuse me, excuse me. This, excuse me, ma'am.
You read the Constitution of the United States.
You read the Constitution, ma'am. I will have you removed, ma'am, if you continue barking back. I will have you removed. There is decorum in this, in these chambers. There is decorum in these chambers.
You are now operating under decorum. You would not pray if you were operating properly with the United States Constitution.
Ma'am, you're out of order. Ma'am, you're, you're out of order, ma'am. You're out of order, ma'am.
No, I have a heart, and I'm speaking.
Well, you will speak if you keep decorum, ma'am. So the tithe is a promise. Now, as far as Price Homes, I appreciate everything you do, and I truly believe that the quality workmanship that you provide, your reputation is impeccable. And I truly believe that you make one-acre homes, people will come. I really believe that. I have seen your homes. I've witnessed people in, in their homes that are priced built homes, and you do have quality homes. So I believe you keeping that one-acre lot, you would build a home and you would get the price you need. Then I'll wrap it up with the Center Point Church. I love everything you do. I thank you for everything that you do. It is about giving back to the community. I will not be supporting this because I believe in one-acre lots, and I've been fighting for one-acre lots since I got on this dais, and I'm not backing down just because of anything that may come up on the horizon. I am a proponent of those one-acre lots. I remember we had so much more of them, so I will not be in support of this. I have a motion by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. I'm going to call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? By nay. Nay. I want a roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hammer?
Nay.
Councilman Landevan?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Nay. We are now on item number 10, and again, I ask for decorum. If counsel's speaking, we're giving you the respect. You speak when you're called upon. Do not interrupt counsel when they speak. Madam Smith?
The following item is quasi-judicial in nature. Public hearings agenda item number 10. Any person who wishes to testify on such a matter must sign a speaker card which contains a sworn oath to tell the truth. Any individual addressing the council must state his or her name and confirm that a speaker card has been signed. Attorneys who are appearing on behalf of a party and not providing testimonial evidence are not considered witnesses and need not be sworn. Counsel should disclose any ex parte communication by disclosing the subject matter of the communication and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place. The order of this proceeding will be as follows. First, staff will make his presentation, followed by the applicant, then any other interested party. The applicant will be allowed concluding remarks. The hearing will then be closed, and no additional testimony or argument will be allowed. The council will then deliberate in public. Any speaker may be subject cross-examination by the council or any other interested party. Any other person may speak for a maximum of three minutes. The applicant will then be allowed concluding remarks. Quasi-judicial body may modify the time limits on its own motion or upon request of a party to the proceeding. The hearing will then be closed, no additional testimony or argument will allow. At the end of deliberation, a council member will make a motion on the application to bring the matter to a vote. Every council member is then free to vote in favor or against the motion. Ordinance 2025-44. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Broward County, Florida, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Palm Bay by changing the zoning of property from RR Rural Residential District to RS2 Single Family Residential District, which property is located in the vicinity north of Emerald Road, south of Valor Drive, and west of Cavern Avenue, and legally described herein, providing for a change of the zoning map, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. We do have Acting Growth Director Althea Jeffries here to give a presentation.
We do have Acting Growth Director Althea Jefferson here to give a presentation.
Thank you. So the subject lot is just east of the case we just saw. It consists of ten acres. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning on the ten acres from rural residential to RS Two. Based on the factors of analysis, the comprehensive plan, and the land development code, staff agrees that the applicant meets the review criteria set forth and that this site is uniquely suited for development as an RS Two development. The utilities department, as well as public works, agreed with the findings of staff in the planning department, and the utility infrastructure proposed will connect to the city's centralized water and sewer. It was found that the traffic going out to Jupiter and Malabar would not greatly or adversely affect the surrounding properties or degrade the level of service for the road beyond that, excepted by the comprehensive plan. The proposory zoning doesn't constitute spot zoning, and it's not an isolated or arbitrary zoning change, but rather a logical extension of the existing zoning districts within the area. The Planning and Zoning Board made a recommendation to the city council that the applicant's request be denied, and the vote was four to one.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have three questions, if I remember all of them. First question, do they specify on the reason for denial?
There there were some items that were cited as part of the motion, and I apologize, I don't have the motion in front of me. But they cited specific criteria from the factors of analysis found in the code that they disagreed with staff, which they're able to do, that there were certain elements that did not meet the factors of analysis. They, I believe, mentioned the traffic, and there was some mention of the school issue for the elementary and middle school.
Okay. And if you we have several speakers, so if you get that information by the time we wrap up, by the time, yeah. But two more questions, I apologize. And this might be for Mr. Morton. How many rural residential districts do we currently have in Palm Bay?
How many? Well, I I can't tell you how many specifically. I can give you an acreage when I come back to the podium, because we do have that in our comprehensive plan.
And that leads to my third question. With the updating of the comprehensive plan, we know that started back in 2019, it's been a five-year, six-year process. This wasn't this wasn't recommended to be rezoned to what is being rezoned now.
Okay, so again, as part of the comprehensive plan, the zoning map is not considered. The land development code.
That's what I mean, sorry.
Right, is the implementation of the comprehensive plan. And so you do have in some communities where the comprehensive plan or the future land use map is not necessarily compatible with the existing zoning. And there appears to not have been an exercise where the map was audited to see if there was a way to get rid of some of these inconsistencies that we have in the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Just to clarify a question Councilman Johnson asked. I don't believe this is verbatim. I think this is transcribed to the intent. I don't let it certified. But it says, motion by Mr. Filiberto, seconded by Mr. McNally to submit case Z two-five-zero-zero-zero-three to the city council for denial. Motion based on rural residential being a rarity in Palm Bay, green space preservation should be paramount, and rural residential was a more proper match in density.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Morton.
Any additional questions, counsel? Thank you. Deputy Mayor? Speaker Carden?
Bill Batten, five-eight-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and I agree one hundred percent. The amount of rural, the percentage of rural residential land that we have left in the City of Palm Bay is dwindling every day. Case in point, I bought on my street because it was all rural residential, bought a farm. Now there's only two pieces of rural residential left in that entire street, mine and my neighbor. That's it. So I hate seeing rural residential land go. And everybody around me has got beautiful homes, because everybody has acreage. The smallest one is two acres, the next one is two and a half, then it goes five, six, and twelve. That's what the acreage, but everybody has beautiful homes, and acreage is what makes those homes so nice. So if you keep this as rural residential land, you can still build beautiful homes in this area, and they will sell. People want them. There's more than one person that does not want to live in a PUD or right next on a quarter-acre lot. Some people want to have a little bit more. That's why they have to buy two or three quarter-acre lots so they can have something they want. To make it even worse, how many times even tonight did you have to say, well, I want to have to get a variance so I can put a swimming pool in? Because you bought lots that were made too small for the lifestyle that people want to have in the City of Palm Bay. So when you start getting rid of bigger lots, you start hindering the people's lifestyle because they don't have land to make the life enjoyable the way they want. So I concur with planning and zoning. Enjoy the golden, the green gems that you have of rural residential land and make larger lots and beautiful home sites. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Pat Dalper.
Pat Dalper, Fortin, George's Avenue, Northeast Palm Bay. I have two points, and I'm not sure if how much it's going to matter, but I think it's going to matter a lot. The water model and then the wastewater flow. The residential fire flow, which is what it's called, required onsite improvements, thirteen, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty feet of eight-inch water main along the development planned on the site roadway. Additionally, two segments of existing off-site water mains were upsized in the model from six inches to eight inches. So my question is, is the city going to change the pipes on Emerald or Mirage? Then specifically, five-hundred-and-fifty feet of water main along Mirage and seven-hundred-and-fifty feet along Emerald to be upsized for residential flow? Who's paying for the change in pipes? Wastewater model. On-site gravity wastewater piping was considered for connection to the existing eight-inch gravity wastewater main along Emerald Road. However, there appears to be insufficient depth along existing Emerald Road wastewater gravity piping to accommodate the connection and still maintain required gravity pipe cover. So therefore, there's going to have to be a lift station put in. Who's going to take care of the lift station? The development or the city? The manhole lining may be needed to reduce long-term corrosion due to the lift station discharge. So this is on Emerald. The summary of both the water and wastewater, this is like a twenty-year down the road. The level of service analysis assumes that the city's treatment facility capacity for water and wastewater will be available, including the South Regional Water Reclamation Facility. This is twenty-year planning, so is it going to be available when this development is finished? So upsizing of off-site water main from six to eight inches is needed to meet residential flow requirements. So again, who is going to do that? The builder or the city?
Next speaker? Ruth Coffield.
Good evening again. So ditto to what I said earlier, just saying. Couple of questions. Now, we have this new term called infill building that our builders around the city and the county want to use to just pave over paradise. Let's see, that was this song, just saying. And separation of church and state, just for the lady in the back, is a falsehood. It does not exist in any law. I'm a constitution coach, so I'm pretty much teach that every day, and I can talk to anybody about that later on. No rezoning was part of this new council's objective for this year. So we've done the absolute opposite of doing that, just saying. So again, what Pat said about the comp plan, should have just left it alone. Now, where is the disclosure for this future residents that are going to be part of this project? I don't see any disclosures from the builder or anybody else that tells what that HOA resident is going to pay for a very small twenty-six home HOA. Somebody claims that that it is mandated by law that it has to be an HOA. I don't see that code in any of the packet. I don't see any of that anywhere. I don't see where that that law exists. So what portion of all these expenses are these future homeowners supposed to pay? Then one question on protocol, maybe Mayor, Madam Attorney can talk to this. So if there is a person on the council who goes to this church, should they refrain from voting? Just checking. Thank you so much.
Brian Humphries?
Next speaker? Councilman Johnson?
Yes, Mayor. Only because it was mentioned, I would like to have the city attorney speak on that, because you you didn't have to abstain technically with family Christmas extravaganza, because you weren't getting any monetary benefit from it. But out of out of your conviction, that's why you abstained. But I I disagree with what was just said, but I just wanted the city attorneys to clarify as well, because whether you're a member of a church or not, you're not you're not receiving tithes, you're not receiving anything. But I would like to hear the legal standpoint from the city attorney so we can clarify for the audience.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. I did talk with Deputy Mayor Jaffe, review the voting conflicts law, and, as I typically do, consulted the Commission on Ethics. There is not a voting conflict. Deputy Mayor Jaffe is receives no personal financial benefit or loss from this rezoning. He although he is on the, he attends the church, he's on the construction board of the church, but that does that relationship does not make the church a principle of his because he vol- completely voluntary. He's getting regardless of whether this goes is approved or denied, it does not in nor in any way, he doesn't financially benefit or financially lose. So it was it's my opinion, and it was the opinion of the attorney on the Commission on Ethics, that there is no voting conflict and that he was able to actually vote in this matter.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
And and just to elaborate on that briefly, you know, is we know you go to the House Church, Mayor, and that's that's one thing I want to applaud, because Pastor Kilnagato supported this project, but you didn't support the project. And that's being a free thinker and thinking on behalf of the city and not just behalf of, okay, my pastor did it, I'm going to do it. So I want to acknowledge that as well. We're meant to be free thinkers. Every single person here is meant to be a free thinker. So, you know, Deputy Mayor Jaffe has his choice, you have yours, and all of us, and we're listening to the constituents. So I just want us all to be cautious, and I know it's going to get a little more in-depth later on in the conversation, but accusatory comments, you know, I don't think they have a place here, and they cause more division than, you know, unification. So that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Virginia Sierra.
Good evening again. I just want to say a couple of things that I think Bill had mentioned. Oh, okay, sorry. The one-acre lots, I think anybody who lives in Palm Bay would love to sit on a one-acre lot, but the cost is not there. So what I mean by that is I do mortgages for a living. We could never get an appraisal in Palm Bay on a one-acre lot sitting in the area that this sits in, meaning those homes would have to be six to seven-hundred thousand dollars sitting right there, and they would never get appraised. So the lending on that would not happen. So you'd have to have cash buyers for every single one of those lots coming in, because they just would not be able to get financing on them. So that's one of the parts of that. As far as our church building and everything that we're doing, I promise we're not putting in a movie theater. And also, I think another thing that was brought up was that we sold that front portion. This this is something that we had discussed with somebody that does live in the neighborhood, because we did have those discussions. We did not sell that front portion that sits on Malabar Road. We would not have sold that. We actually would have kept that for ourselves if that was our land. That was not our land. We did not sell to that developer in that community that's in there. But I know that some of the areas that were brought up is if we put something else large in. If we put something else large in, it would bring in big stadium lighting, things like that, that would really affect the neighbors. So I I want people to think about that as well. So if we did sell to, I think somebody had brought us up a pickleball court. If we did sell to something like that, you're talking about fifty to sixty to seventy cars dumping in there at night so that all these people can go in, and they're going to have these big lights like you do at the park over down off Emerson. So those are some of the things that we did think about, again, when we were looking at selling to Price Family. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, all due respect, I've witnessed one-acre lots in Palm Bay. They're far few and in between.
Yes.
And I truly believe that they would be successful. I truly believe that you would get those six-hundred thousand dollars. I've seen also homes built on four-quarter acre strips for that very same purpose.
Yeah.
But yes, ma'am, I I still believe in those principles. I've been here thirty-eight years, and they were more commonplace than today.
Yes, definitely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Humphries?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Brian Humphries. I live at nine-six-seven Emerald Road. You know, like I said, when I built my home here, I never expected to see growth as a neighborhood, but I I accept the church. I knew a church was there, and I was happy with the church being there, because I'm the last lot on that plotted subdivision. You know, I was happy to move there, and I like I could see the church expanding and growing. I believe in Christ, and I believe in the faith, and I believe the church should grow. But I don't think it needs to grow in in the fact that giving up land to put up subdivisions that border my property. Like, some of the plans here, they there's been a couple of different roads. There hasn't been a clear cut. Is the road going to go parallel to Emerald? Or is it going to go right beside my piece of property? Where now I've got four, three roads coming in and out from my property, right off the edge of my property. I've got wildlife. We got gopher turtles. I have an active gopher turtle burrow right on the edge of my property. I feeds in my grass on a daily basis. I mean, where's all that wildlife going to go? Like they said, they the sewer, they're going to have to upgrade the sewer system, put in a horse main and with a with a private lift station. All that, what's going to happen when they can't keep up with that private lift station? It's going to be put back onto the city. We have a lift station at the end of our street, at right on Copley and Mirage. I see city workers there all the time flushing that thing out because it's backed up. Now we're going to add more sewage to that to that system. Where's all the stormwater going to go? Our roads flood as it is. We we don't have catch basins in our yards and on our streets. The city wasn't designed to have catch basins. It wasn't developed in that way. Where's all that water going? It's sitting in our yards. Right now, we've had a lot of rain, and it's it's almost impossible to mow your yard because all that water can't go nowhere. Where's all that water going to go? Another concern is that that natural green space, we don't have that. That that's a buffer. I just I just take the council's or the Planning and Zoning Board's decision to dis- I just I just take the councils or the planning and zoning board's decision to disagree and not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Steve Petty.
Again, appreciate your time and the opportunity. Don't have a lot more to add what I said before. But there are two things I guess I'll just respond to. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, one of the things they talked about is what appropriate transition zones are. And when you go from a high density residential, like the apartment complex that is directly to the north of this, it was referenced that the appropriate transition would be a low density residential before you got to a rural residential. So with the changes that have taken place, this this no longer fits appropriately, which is probably why Virginia was saying you'd have a hard time getting someone wanting to pay that price for a one acre lot when it's going to neighbor a high density apartment complex. They would want to purchase that home where they're not going to be right next to it, which is why the low density residential feels more appropriate in this scenario. And a clarification, I just kind of want to respond on the church's behalf on this. Everything at our church is open to the public with no expectation of a tithe. We never require someone to give. That is something that is a personal relationship and a reflection on an individual's faith. Because we are a church, we will teach that as part of the teachings of the Bible. But it is never an expectation or a requirement that someone has to give a thing to participate in the programming and the activities and the community assistance that is a part of the ministry of Centerpoint Church. Thanks.
Next speaker. Kristen Lanzana.
Good evening, everyone. Kristen Lanzana, Northwest Palm Bay. This property is one of the only remaining residential, sorry, rural residential lands in our city. At the last meeting, us chicken owners were told that if we wanted to have chickens, we should move to rural residential lands. While at the same time, you guys are considering rezoning all the residential lands, rural residential, to accommodate more HOAs and apartments. The P and Z Board, as we said, has already voted four to one to deny this request, and I hope you will too. To wrap this up, my request tonight is simple. Keep this land as rural residential and protect our green spaces for the community and for our native wildlife. Thank you.
Next speaker. Mashani Wonett.
Hello, thanks again for hearing me out. Since it was such a factor for the property that is linked to this one, so I know it's going to be relevant to the discussion on this one, I'd like to discuss again the live local situation. I will first say that I would hate to see us make such permanent decisions for things that are threats of ifs and maybes that they may do. You know, I first of all, I think that there's a lot of reasons why the church wouldn't want to do this, which is why they said it's their last ditch effort. You know, I think that personally, they don't necessarily want to be right next door to the low income, you know, housing there. But I also think that they aren't going to stand to make, you know, what they would make from it. I'd be interested, I'm not, you know, obviously a lawyer. But in terms of, you know, if they sell that land, which is what they want to do to get the money from it, then the developer that they sell it to can't necessarily do it with that. So would they have to keep the land to be able to do that? And if so, wouldn't that de-incentivize some of the reasons to do it to begin with? So I have some questions on that. But I would say, you know, whatever it is that decision you make, you know, they're going to go forward with it. So anything that we can do just to cause them to go back to the drawing board, reevaluate, is there something that we could do that would be better both for them and everybody involved? Make everybody, you know, a happy compromise? You know, that is what saying nay gives us the chance to do. That's all. It just buys us some time to have more conversation. A yes is a yes that cannot go back. It cannot be changed. You know, I will say, I think that some of the frustration with the community is some of the lack of clarity in terms of what the plans really are with this land. As we said at the, you know, community meeting that we went to and the zoning board meeting, you know, lots of questions and points were brought up about roads coming in and out and what would make sense. And it's been very frustrating that developers, they're like, well, if it gets approved, we'll give you those answers. It's like, well, you know, I feel like those answers, you guys should be able to see that and understand that so you can make an educated decision on the state of things. So I would just really, you know, hope to see, you know, that maybe you guys give a chance for them to go back and reevaluate. Whereas if you, you know, say yay tonight, you know, it's kind of said and done. You know, we made a lot of good points to the zoning board. They really did make that recommendation based on something meaningful, I promise you. And so I just hope that you guys will, you know, look a little closer and buy, you know, consider it more duly before making a permanent decision. So, thanks.
Next speaker. Briar Wonett.
Thank you. Despite disagreement in religious matters, I agree with the mayor. I that one acre lots would accomplish what the community desires. That sounds like compromise to me. I grew up in the world of the 2008 housing bubble popping, and I can't help but feel that we are in a bubble now. I'm worried about this land being cleared and the market continuing to move in the current downward direction and the development being slowed to a crawl or stopping completely. And we're left with just a field where there was some, you know, semblance of nature. I've worked my fingers with a bone for the past 10 years to buy a home and start a family. My daughter was born last year and I built a very nice nursery and a backyard that looks out at the trees and the natural area behind my home. It would be a real shame for her to grow up looking at a plastic fence and yet another HOA. You know, we bought the house specifically feeling, looking at this place and going, finally, somewhere with a little bit of green where we're not just drowning in suburbia and urbanism. It's, you know, it would really change how we feel about Palm Bay and would definitely influence all of our choices for years to come on everything with our home. Thank you again for hearing me. I, you know, I hope something can be done about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Tom Walker.
That would be Pastor Tom Walker for you.
My mama called me Tom, so that's goodbye me. I don't even know where to begin. I don't think any lies have been told, but a lot of misinformation has been given. We're we're not building a mega church. It's 500 seat sanctuary and a redesign of the present building. And we bought this land was purchased by the church years ago to develop. So I appreciate the neighbors who we love and we've worked with and they've worked with us. They've been great neighbors. But if you want, you want trees behind you, then you need to buy the land because it was built to develop. And that that was, it might not be developed the way that it originally was intended, but it was still bought to be developed. As to one acre lots, I think I would pay attention to Virginia Sierra and her knowledge about that. We are, I've heard a lot of concern about how much the building, how much price homes is going to charge for the homes and how much debt that's going to cause and how much, everybody's getting into everybody's business a lot. How much the church is going to go into debt? All I know is this, that we believe that this, that our mandate is make a difference in this city among our neighbors, not just near but far as well. And for that reason, we need to expand. We have to expand. Otherwise, we will not fulfill our mandate to make a difference in this city. Love the city. Like I said, I've been here 20 years. And I have one mission in the years that I have left. And that is to leave a prosperous, I don't mean financially, but a prosperous church that is making a big difference in this community by introducing people to Christ, helping families get stronger, helping to raise their children, a safe place for teenagers to hang out, to learn about Jesus. That is our message. That is our mandate. And so I'm not going to say we're going to do whatever it takes to get it done. I'm just trusting that you as a as a board will let us let us move forward in this. I want to thank you however you vote. I respect you all and appreciate the nice things you said about the church. But you should have said something nice about me.
So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Price to step forward as the applicant and perhaps address any initial comments and close out with perhaps answering any questions that you may have for the public that spoke before you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the kind words from yourself and the council. You know, it means a lot to me. I take a lot of pride and continue to grow this community. I grew up here. My kids are growing up here. And it's it's definitely very heartening to hear that it's being noticed and recognized, our contribution to this great community. I understand the community members' concerns, especially the neighbors around them. I mean, like I said, they were there first. This is a green space, a moment of peace in this hectic life of ours. And I want to rip it apart and and make room for more neighbors. You know, more barbecues, more apple pies, a nice community. You know, like I said, it's going to be a little bit towards the higher end. Unfortunately, as a developer, someone who just deals with cold, hard numbers, acre lots would not be possible to be built. One, you you just couldn't get the services there at a price. It would only be a very small HOA with with only a few members. You'd be required to do an HOA. They would have to take care of the streets. They'd have to maintain the green spaces, the drainage, just those couple of, you know, what would you talk about 10 neighbors? But by making it 40 neighbors, we make it, you know, a small but strong HOA that can afford to pay its bills, that can take care of that lift station, that can maintain those roads, that can take care of the drainage. I know there was concerns with the community about the utilities. You know, we take care of that as a developer. We put in brand new, fresh utilities. We upgrade the city's utilities, make them better for all the neighbors. There was concerns about the traffic, you know. With 40 homes, we're matching the character of the neighborhood. This is this is what the streets were designed for. They've done the traffic studies. We make no appreciable difference. The traffic problems are way beyond anything we're doing with just 40 homes. I just feel strongly that this this really helps the community and moves us forward. It's the highest and best use of this land. And and I want to assure the the community, you know, we do our best to have a deft touch. You know, we don't, we don't try to to disrupt their lives anymore than we have to as as we we improve their community and their and their property values.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Thank you. Does that conclude your comments, Mr. Price?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. So at this time, that was the last speaker. Counsel, any additional questions of staff? I'm closing the public hearing and asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-44.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Landevan. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the factors of analysis. I agree with the staff report. I watched the planning and zoning meeting and quite frankly, I was embarrassed by the members that are appointed on that board. It was a lot of confusion. A lot of them didn't understand land use for zoning. And they didn't come up with a reason that was truly for denial, it was a lot of disfeelings. So for that reason, I, based on the factors of analysis, I am in favor of this project.
Thank you. Councilman Landevan.
No comment, Mayor.
Anyone else wish to comment? Councilman Hammer?
Yeah, I'd like to just echo what I said before. And I want to remind counsel, our priority up here is infrastructure for a reason. Our infrastructure is not keeping up. I absolutely love the project. I love, I actually went and saw one of Price's homes that's on a two acre lot out in Deer Run. And I mean, they did an amazing job. I have no problems with the house. Great project, wrong time. I think we need to catch up with our infrastructure first. And I think we need to be having this discussion firstly when 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 I can call Malabar Road something that's not an emergency matter. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, Mayor, I'm torn. I'm torn on this one. Because I recognize the need for rural residential. But I also have seen the benefit of what is for the community. And I see the benefit of what Centerpoint's done for the community. And expanding that will expand their reach for the community as well. But on the same point, you don't need four walls to expand your reach. So that's that's where I'm I'm teetering back and forth.
I've got the city attorney wanting to weigh in.
Yep.
Did you want to conclude your comments or did you want to wait for hers?
Yeah, because to the point of deputy mayor, it has to be based off the findings. It can't be based off, you know, anything other than that. So yeah, go ahead, the city attorney.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you. Which actually dovetail right into what I wanted to do, which is to remind you all that we are now on a quasi judicial matter because I know I'm hearing a lot of similar comments to the other matter, which was a comprehensive plan, and there's a big difference. You have a lot of discretion here, discretion as far as what you approve with the comprehensive plan. It's legislative, it's really what your vision is. But when you're getting down to quasi judicial, we're looking at competent substantial evidence. And I also want to remind you all, the report from staff is competent substantial evidence, which is actually saying that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So if we're going to consider denying, we're going to need competent substantial evidence to show that this project is not consistent with the comprehensive plan or does not meet the requirements of our land development code, which we can't rely upon staff's report because staff's report says that it does. So we're going to need some basis to say that this, that rises to the level of competent substantial evidence that this project is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan or our land development code. I just want to remind counsel of that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Johnson? Yeah, I'm still I'm still a nay and I believe one acre lots and that's where I'm standing. That's the bottom line. So I'm calling the question. All in favor, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Landevan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnson?
Nay.
Councilman Hammer?
Nay.
Councilman Landevan?
Yay.
Mayor Medina?
Nay.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Aye.
Motion fails three to two. We are now on item number 11. Madam Smith.
Ordinance 2025-28. An ordinance of the city of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain real property generally located north of Willbrook Street in the vicinity southwest of the intersection of St. John's Heritage Parkway and Mariloma Boulevard and legally described herein. Provided for filing a copy of the ordinance with the Brevard County Clerk of the Circuit Court, the Chief Administrator Officer of Brevard County, and the State of Florida Department of State, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing. And Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Once again, we have Acting Growth Director Althea Jefferson here to give you a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is a nearly 33 acre parcel of land just south of Cypress Bay West. It's at the extension of the new interchange on St. John's Heritage Parkway. And the applicant has submitted, in addition to the annexation application, two other applications, which would be required at their annex, for comp plan and rezoning changes from the county designations to city. You'll see those upon the second reading of this annexation ordinance. Staff met with the city attorney's office as well as the city surveyor, and it was determined that this proposal does not create any enclaves or serpentine-like fingers. It is a natural extension of the city limits. It was reviewed by utilities, engineering, transportation, of course, growth management. And the comments were in support of the annexation. The planning and zoning board recommended that the city council approve this particular request. request.
Any questions, council? Seeing none? Is the applicant here?
Thank you. Jake Wise, civil engineer for the project, and we also have representative from Forestar here, in case there's any questions I might not be able to answer. What you're voting on tonight is simply the annexation, it's a voluntary annexation. We've been working with staff for over two years to bring this project to fruition. Some of the other projects nearby, like Rolling Meadows, Sunterra, they went ahead and developed in the county. We could have, we didn't want to. We wanted to be part of the city. Forestar has been a great partner with the city, and we think this project really fits well in what we're doing. Do you have the PowerPoint queued up? So what we're proposing is a single-family subdivision with straight zoning, RS3. We're allowed up to five units an acre if our comp plan is approved at the next meeting, but we're only proposing 2.2. Where we're located is right here in this L-shaped. North of here is Cypress Bay West, which is under construction. Mariloma Boulevard, as part of Forestar's projects, has looped all the way back around, taking a tremendous amount of traffic off of the Babcock Street corridor. St. John's Heritage Parkway comes through here to 95. This is Emerald Lakes here, and then this is Cypress Bay Preserve, which is entirely built by Forestar. We're looking to do products that aren't, are different than what is on the rest of those projects. We're doing sixty- and seventy-foot-wide lots, while the rest of them are the majority of our townhomes, forties and fifty-foot-wide lots. So we're distinguishing ourselves that way. With all of our work in this area, we have been working with the city to provide a, there it is, a temporary fire station here and a permanent fire station nearby. The staff report identifies-
Can you show that again, Jake?
It's just right off Mariloma-
Okay.
-at the south end of that lake, next to Sunrise Elementary.
And where's the other one?
The other one is going to be either Emerald Lakes-
On that end?
-right here-
Okay.
-or over in Ashton Park, just a little further.
Ashton Park, okay.
Same with the police station, the police were preferring to be located at Ashton Park. So we're looking at this whole area regionally, as this board knows very well. So the reason we're not doing a PUD, which you've seen so many PUDs, is because the way the current code is written, PUD requires commercial. This location just won't support commercial. Kamaya, Palm Bay Point East and West along Babcock Street and the Parkway has 125 acres of commercial. Emerald Lakes, right here, right off 95, all four quadrants of the interchange, 2.2 million square feet of commercial. This project just can't support it, so that's why we're asking for the RS3 straight zoning for the residential. These residents will support the commercial that comes in with them, and with the larger lots typically have larger houses as well. So I mentioned earlier, we've been working on this for two years because of the private-public partnership Forestar has. Some of the things that Forestar has already done is more than eighteen hundred single-family homes in this area. They built all the infrastructure, utilities, master stormwater, so that publics could be built. They shared the same utilities that Forestar brought in, they shared the same stormwater ponds that Forestar constructed. They constructed a twenty-inch force main, way oversized, almost three miles long, to support this whole area. They've already done that, they've already made that, which again, helps all the commercials and other residential in this area, plus the schools. They built the first extension of the St. John's Heritage Parkway past Babcock Street, which was the way that interconnected with Mariloma that allowed that loop. They were a part of the traffic signal that was installed at Mariloma and Babcock Street. If you ever tried to make a left-hand turn before that traffic signal was there in the morning, it was almost impossible. This project's going to extend that parkway even further and utilities further, and so it's progressing to extend further west with all development dollars. We have an Odyssey Charter School that is coming in right here, just west of Babcock Street, a K-8. One of the deficiencies that's been identified recently is that the Broad County Public School Board is getting short on seats in the K-8. So we're working as a community to solve that, and Odyssey Charter School coming in is going to do that. That school's within walking distance of here. These kids are going to ride their bicycles to that school, so we're pretty excited about it being part of the community. The, next slide. Just to get your bearings here, this is the L-shaped here, north is to your left. This is the existing roundabout that Mariloma Boulevard ties in with the extension of the parkway, and this is where we'll extend the public right-of-way and extend the parkway and utilities to our project. The site has a lot of amenities all the way around, a lot of green space, buffers, linear trails, large tree preservation area here. We've got an emergency access, just in case, for some reason, we can't get out of our main entrance, and really have created a pedestrian interconnectivity. And just a little bit further to the east, along this boulevard roadway, that's the extension of the parkway, sidewalks are already in, it's a very safe way to walk to that commercial and to that future school. One of the staff comments was that the change to RS3, single-family residential should not have any significant impact on the surrounding properties. Willbrook subdivision will blend well with the existing development in Cypress Bay west to the north. Planning and zoning board, we were the only project approved at the last meeting, so we're pretty excited about that with their recommendation. So you're not voting on the small-scale amendment, you're not voting on the rezoning tonight, but when we do come back before you, you'll see we meet all ten criteria for the small-scale amendment, we meet all six criteria for the zoning, and that we are compatible, we have the staff support and the PZ support as well. So that, appreciate a chance to respond if there are any public comments, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Seeing none, or deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Wise, for the presentation. Can you show me how far you plan on extending the St. John's Heritage Parkway?
Yeah, I was-
We are, from the roundabout here that's existing, we're extending it to our main entrance, but we're providing the public right-of-way all the way to the end of our project.
Okay.
We also have the ability to-
For how many lanes?
It would be two lanes at this time, but it's be designed for four lanes, and we're providing stormwater treatment for the future four-lane as well.
The future right-of-way will be four lanes?
Yes.
Okay. I was going to ask.
Beamed to it.
Carry on.
I was just answering the question. Was there anything else I could answer?
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to tee it over to our city manager regarding those right-of-way acquisitions. So anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Yes, sir. Master Chief? Anyone else after Master Chief?
Bill Batten, 586 Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. First off, I think the City of Palm Bay is too big already, because every time we increase the land mass, that eventually means we're going to increase the density or the population, and as a result of that, we have shortfall in our police and our fire and our infrastructure because we can't keep up with, because our density increases. But with this particular annexation, I said I was in favor of the planning and zoning, and the one reason why I am is because if we don't annex this parcel into the City of Palm Bay, it will go to Brevard County, and it will be built out using our resources, our water, our sewer that we've had to run to them, and we won't get any of the tax revenue on the basis of that. So that's why I was in favor of annexing this one parcel, which does make the city bigger, but sometimes you have to take the good with the bad. As for expansion onto the St. John's Heritage Parkway, I'd like to see some of the developers go ahead and planning, building it out four-lane now, so we're done with it, instead of having the next thirty or forty years under construction, because that's the way they've been doing it, and that's the way they're planning on so much of the new of it, is it'll be, just to our next entrance, we'll make it two lanes, to our next entrance, we'll make it two lanes. Go ahead and build the St., since they're the ones that say they're paying for it, go ahead and build it out now, build it out four-lanes, that'll make the quality of life better for the residents that are there, instead of looking at the next twenty years of every month or every two years having to have another construction zone along the St. John's Heritage Parkway. So, bottom line, let's go ahead and let this expansion happen, only because it's going to give us the money instead of the Brevard County, because they are going to come in there with Sunterra. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this item? Anyone else? Okay, you want to come up and answer that, that question? Build it now, and they shall come.
Well, we talked about fire, we already have the temporary station, and we're working on the permanent station nearby. We already talked about police, so that is being worked on. The infrastructure, we're paying for as part of this project. We're extending the utilities, they've already extended a twenty-inch force main. That is a tremendous expense, over three miles for this whole region. Right now, we have another project that's extending a sixteen-inch water main, same three miles and even further to support the same area, so the developers are working together to make that happen and are paying for that infrastructure. As far as building four lanes today, this is a seventy-four-lot small subdivision. It cannot afford to build a four-lane road. There's only two lanes coming in from Babcock Street to Mariloma right now. They're not going to build the four lanes until it's warranted, which will be probably way past my retirement, and so we're adding the two more lanes to bring it in now. But we are designing it for the four, we're putting the two lanes together, so it's real easy to add the other four lanes on the opposite side of the median in the future. It wouldn't impact traffic patterns at that time, it would just be easy to do that this time. So the plans will be done, the stormwater will be ready, the stormwater conveyance will be ready, so it would be easy to add the additional two lanes in the future, but this project just can't afford to do four lanes at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, guys? Okay. Thank you, sir. So at this point, I'm closing the public hearing, asking for a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by-
Second.
Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Passes 5-0. We're now on item number 12. Madam Smith?
Ordinance 2025-33, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by appropriating and allocating funds as identified in Exhibit A, consisting of two pages and incorporated in its entirety herein. Recognizing that such appropriations must be made pursuant to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Bay, Chapter 35, Finance, adopting, ratifying, confirming, and validating the allocations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing and have Mr. Morton present this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This is a second read and final time at tonight's council meeting for this ordinance, the quarterly budget amendment, which is accounting for all the budget amendments completed in the third quarter. If you'll notice, it's basically a true-up document that matches expenditures with revenues, and in some instances, just details the expense of impact fees or specific fee funds, such as the I-95 Connector Road Fund or the Utilities Renewal and Replacement Fund. I do have, we do have our finance director here tonight if we have any questions.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? None? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Yes, sir. Seeing none? I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hammer. Gentlemen, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes 4-0. All right, before we go on to new business item number three, which is this, next, as we moved our program, I'm going to take a five-minute recess, so we'll take a five- Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is now in order and in session. We are now on new business item number three, and I'm going to defer to Deputy Mayor Jaffe to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last week, I think council collectively as a whole has been receiving emails, phone calls, I know staff's been receiving phone calls related to some messaging about a planned march that's going to take place at Walmart and at City Hall, and for just the sake of transparency and the ability for the public to speak up about this and for the council to speak about it in the sunshine, I thought it'd be a good idea to place it on the agenda.
Does that conclude your presentation? Did you want to go to-
I'd like to go to speaker cards, Mayor, and then open up for council discussion.
Let's open up with speaker cards.
Danny McDowell.
My name is Dan McDowell, 1034 Bryce Lane, West Melbourne, your neighbor, and thank you, Mayor, and the council, for allowing me to have a few minutes here, or I'll make it brief, actually, I won't even use my full three minutes. I do event organizing throughout the state of, throughout this area, and we do peaceful events and demonstrations and relays, and I want to say that I support all peaceful demonstrations, relays. With that said, as a, also as a former councilman from another neighboring city, I am very sensitive to how I display and how I represent myself, and I will say that I want to put on record that I am opposed to the flyers that have been passed out and distributed. They lean towards hate-speak, and I feel very uncomfortable with what I've been seeing, and I cannot support those, even though I do support relays that are peaceful. But in this particular case, I do not support it. I actually reject it. And as an event organizer, we work hard at trying to keep it peaceful and make sure that the demonstrations are, and keep everyone safe. So I am concerned about the safety of everybody involved. With that said, I'm also thinking about how we represent ourselves in, as awesome roles that you guys are all in, because I've been there, I get it, it's honorable, I think it's important, but you also have to keep it in perspective, when you were running for office as candidates, you ran for everyone. You ran for the city, and I think you've got to kind of put that in perspective when we look at these things. If you're going to put your name on something, you're representing everyone in the city. So with that said, I just want to be able to put that on record, that I do not agree with the language that's being used on the current flyers that are being used for this march. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debra. Debra Bracalone?
It's all right, you said it wrong, but you're good. Debbie Bracalone, 1821, Agora Circle, Apartment 7. I agree with the gentleman with what he said. You gentlemen are supposed to be leaders. You are supposed to represent-
Debbie, direct it to me.
-everyone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Everyone. Doesn't matter, they're black, brown, green, purple. Doesn't matter they're black, brown, green, purple. You are supposed to be there for everybody. You're supposed to promote unity. And with the flyers that are out and the comments that were made, you have divided this city. And, and it's fractured. Now you have to come up and figure out how to get us united again. That's all. The march where the man was murdered? I never even heard of him. And so, two weeks ago, a week ago, okay? I live a peaceful life. I'm an ex-school bus driver. I know crazy. And this is nuts because I want to live in peace with my neighbors, with my friends, families, my enemies. Isn't that what Jesus teaches us? That we're supposed to love everybody?
Yes.
And we're supposed to look past their problems and help them when they need it? And then we have this. Be leaders. Unite us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Miller, 898 Nelson Avenue. Whether agree or not, voters elected, all of you, for your passion. Voters elected Chandler for his right-wing leaning viewpoints, his history, his connection, they voted for him. They voted for him expecting him to live out this ideology and to bring them into this dais, right, wrong, or indifferent. It's absolutely no different than those communities who are left, who elect strong left-wing leaning representatives. They vote for those folks because they want those ideologies incorporated into their government or the way we conduct our businesses as a people. They're polarizing ideologies. Unity is hard to exist, to expect to turn a blind eye to 3,000 abortions a day. Unity is hard to exist when our children and grandchildren are being indoctrinated by what to think instead of being taught critical thinking skills. Thirty-six percent of our nation's youth believe socialism is the best way to go. In one to two generations, that will completely wipe out a constitutional republic. Look it up. Nelson Mandela said, "The education is the most powerful weapon to change the world," and I would argue that social media is too. The average social media user is on social media for more than two hours a day. There's five billion posts a week, and there's an algorithm that controls what comes across her page. These algorithms could be used to promote peace and promote unity. And man, what a blessing that would be to so many people. But there's no money in it, and there's a war raging for our nation and a battle for our souls. There's an enemy that, out there, that wants to drive division. And it's hard to have unity and win two hours and you get an algorithm feeding you information that drives division instead of bringing unity. Ephesians 4:3 says, "I appeal to you, brothers, to watch out for those who cause division and create obstacles that are contrary to the doctrine that you've been taught." And while we can agree to disagree as neighbors and live in peace, the expectation is that our government is going to put in laws and things on how we conduct business. And sometimes that requires us that love is not acceptance of all behaviors. I can't accept 3,000 abortions a day. I can't accept indoctrination. I, I can't accept that. And, you know, even in the Lord, unity is different, is difficult, because he says you have to choose this day whom you're going to serve. And so, in the last days, there'll be times of much trouble. People will love themselves and money, they'll have pride and tell of all the things, they'll speak against God. Children and young people will not obey their parents, people will not be thankful, they will not be holy, they will not love each other, they cannot get along, they will tell lies, they cannot keep from doing these things. They're wild and will want to beat and hurt those that are good.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name's Butcher Rand, 219 Trenton Avenue. First, I'd like to say happy birthday to the United States Air Force. Today is their birthday.
Seventy-eight years.
Uh, in 1968, I took an oath to defend the Constitution against foreign and domestic enemies. That oath still holds today.
Hoorah.
I served 23 years from the jungles of Vietnam to the deserts of the Middle East in the United States Air Force. Every citizen is guaranteed the right to free speech by the First Amendment of the Constitution. This does not mean you can abuse that speech. The right, you, you can't threaten a person, defame someone by saying something is true when it's not, and you can't incite a riot. These are violations of the First Amendment. We have the right and are allowed to say what we want, and we're protected by the First Amendment without violating those rules. If an official threatens to crimineize, criminalize people's opinion by calling it hate or evil, they can't do this. I had a discussion with a council member several months ago when that council member was, had speech of hate toward Muslims. At that time, he agreed he would not put council member on any more documents, yet here we are. I threatened for an ethics complaint, I dropped it. I don't know what I'm going to do now. Political violence surged during the 60s and 70s, if any of you can remember that. John Kennedy, Malcolm X, Malcolm, Martin Luther King, Kent State are a few examples. The 80s was a relative quiet time, except for President Reagan and James Brady and the mayor of Evansville, Indiana. The 90s, a few, a few spikes. Oklahoma City bombing, bombing, Waco, Rodney King beating, and the riots that followed. Political violence has been on the rise since 2016. Financial anxiety, upheaval of COVID-19, gay rights, same-sex marriage, evil and civil rights. It's a shame when a life is taken, no matter what reason or how the killing is done. The assassination of Charlie Kirk and the killing of a two-year-old child in Melbourne. Leaders need to be calm, not point fingers or blame others. Encouraging citizens to violence, to calm rather than violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Valerie Dietrich.
Ms. Dietrich, I, I'm going to reset your time, but I wanted to share something with you. When you were outspoken, you could get on the mic. When you were outspoken, I should have handled that differently. I, ma'am, I should have handled that differently.
I should.
However, however, I wanted to apologize to you because I retaliated, got louder than you, and that was so unbecoming of me. So I want to say and apologize to you, number one. Number two, I'm going to ask for your forgiveness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on, Ms. Dietrich.
My name is Valerie Dietrich.
Ms., come, right, right to the mic, Ms. Dietrich.
I've lived, well, I wanted to see these folks too, to see my fellow Palm Bayers. Um, I wasn't going to bring up the U.S. Constitution, but let's start there. The First Amendment separates church and state, and Thomas Jefferson fought really hard for that. They would be radicals by today's standards because they dreamed of a beautiful place where everybody was equal. There was slavery, women couldn't vote, I mean, there was indentured servitude. It wasn't perfect. Only one in five people could vote then. All right? And, and, and really, the First Amendment says we shouldn't be praying in government places because it excludes Muslims and atheists. You'll be here all day saying prayers to cover everyone, so we didn't want to do that. If you want to see what government by religion looks like, look to the current-day Middle East. That's not what we want in America. I too believe in protest. We stopped the Vietnam War. I helped lower the voting age to 18 because the Constitution made it 21. And the people I graduated with were sent off to a war we already knew were lost, they didn't believe too, they were sacrificed to that. It was horrible. It was horrible for them. My friends, my 18-year-old friend had to decide whether to run off to Canada, never see their family again, or be shipped to Nam. That is what happened. Now we stand here today, and this person I never heard of, I grew up, I remember Martin Luther King being shot, and I remember marching in civil rights movements and my black friends getting beat, and me getting beat because I was there. I was a woman chemistry major before Title IX, and I had to listen to lectures about how I was inferior because I had two X chromosomes and shouldn't be a chemist. And that's what that person thinks, that you want to honor, that women aren't equal, that people that have more melanin pigment in their skin aren't equal. You represent all of Palm Bay, all of Palm Bay. And, and we need to unite as a country and protect our U.S. Constitution. Justice for all is exactly what the United States should stand for. And letting this person who hates people because of genetic things, he's insane and he's crazy, it's your job to bring us together, not to be prejudiced against people for the way they're born. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Robin Perez.
I also want to thank each and every one of you for your decorum. Thank you.
And sorry, I got a little bit of.
Hello, city council members. Uh, my name is Robin. I lived in Palm Bay for about two years, uh, but I lived in Brevard for over 20 years. I'm a teacher, I'm a mom, and I've actually never spoken publicly, so, um, I felt very moved to come here this evening because of the deep divisions and hate we are facing. Some are calling for a march against left-wing evil, but an event like this is misguided and dangerous. When we demonize entire groups of people, we don't calm fires of extremism, we pour fuel on them. We need to remember extremist violence in recent American history has not been one-sided. In 2015, a far-right white supremacist entered a church in Charleston, South Carolina, and murdered nine parishioners during a Bible study. In 2017, at the Unite the Right rally in Charlottesville, an extremist drove his car into a group of counter-protesters, protesters, killing a woman and injuring dozens. On January 6, 2021, far-right protesters attacked officers at our nation's Capitol, leading to death and injury on both sides. In 2022, a gunman radicalized by far-right propaganda opened fire in Buffalo supermarket, in a Buffalo supermarket, killing 10 shoppers. In June 2025, Democratic Representative Melissa Hortman, her husband and dog, were killed in their home. These are just a few examples. All acts of violence are horrific tragedies, and we should absolutely condemn violence and, and hate. But when leaders call for a march against left-wing evil, we must ask, what purpose does it serve? Who benefits from painting our neighbors as enemies? The truth is extremism and evil will, does not wear one color, it belonged to one side of the political spectrum. When we single out one group, we play a dangerous game of scapegoating that history has warned us against. Truly, we have much more in common than we think. We want a strong, safe community. We want our families and loved ones to be cared for and healthy. We want safe schools, we want to afford our groceries, we want to see our children smile, and we value our freedoms as Americans. But we're so distracted with extremism that we can't focus on these issues that affect all of us. The only path forward is not marches against one another, it's standing together for a better future, choosing civil disagreement over hostility and a love for humanity over politics and fear. Leaders of Palm Bay, I urge you, do not call for events that will deepen our divides. Call instead for dialogues that heal our community and nation. Do not inflame fires of hate. Instead, look to inspire empathy, understanding, and service. Because if we're going to have a future that's worth living in, it will not be built on marches against each other, but on steps toward each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. My name's Alexis. I live in Palm Bay, Florida, 32907. As an involved Democrat and Palm Bay native, the actions taken by Councilman Langvin, apologies if I spoke, pronounced the name wrong, are extremely concerning. The City of Palm Bay prides itself on being a, quote, "diverse community that is among Florida's premier places to live, work, and play." How is it acceptable for any councilman on this, sitting on this nonpartisan council to be making numerous social media posts calling for the punishment of, quote, "left-wing evil"? The vision for the City of Palm Bay claims that the city has a, quote, "strong sense of community, unity, and pride." But we have a sitting councilman that has posted numerous times, "There is no sense of unity to be had with those he has deemed part of the evil left." I watched the councilman post continuously throughout the day of September 11th on his public, formerly known as Twitter, account, where his handle is @Chandler4PB account, calling for further division between our community, saying things like, quote, "In America's first 100 years, and quite frankly, our best 100 years, we did a lot of killing. It was when we stopped killing and started singing kumbaya with communists that our country began going downhill." Quote, "World War I was started for less." Quote, "If the federal government doesn't do something extreme right now, then your people are going to." Quote, "Tit-for-tat is not enough. We need to salt the earth with the remains of every communist in this country." Quote, "The Civil War has begun. Either the feds suspend habeas corpus and start doing some wild stuff, or they stand out of our way when we do it for them. There is no longer a peaceful solution." The irony that Mr. Langvin boasts about being a true patriot while not one posted, not once posting on his social media accounts to honor the victims of 9/11, the, um, of the 9/11 terrorist attack, has not been lost on me. Instead, on a day that should inspire Americans to stand together, the councilman posted continuously, calling for further division and acts of aggression against those he deems as an enemy. My question to the entirety of the city council, what makes a communist? Judging by Mr. Langvin's continuous posting, it could be someone who intended a peaceful process, um, supporting the No Kings Movement, the Black Lives Matters Movement, or the Women's March. It, could it be someone that is a member or supports the LGBTQI community? Could it be citizens that support Medicare for All? Could it be citizens that disagree with the councilman's Christian-practicing and English-only prerogatives, English-speaking-only prerogatives? I love my community and my country, and I believe that the actions of this councilman are disgrace to the city and the council. I urge the council to take a stand and let the community know that we truly believe in a beautiful, free, diverse, and unified City of Palm Bay, as its vision proclaims. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Good evening. I'm Richard Bieber, and I live at 1514 Clear Lake Road in Cocoa, Florida, 32922. This is really bad. Commissioner Langvin has put up, uh, started a, a march, and I, I want to bring this to the attention of everybody listening. It says, "March for Charlie Kirk and all victims of left-wing evil." Think of that. Is that partisan? Is this what we should be doing as commissioners? Being partisan like that? And, and, and the flyer, it says, "Pick the name of one victim of soft-on-crime policies, inept military leadership, or illegal immigration. Write their names on a sign and print out pictures if possible." We will gab, uh, it says, also, "Bring Christian and patriotic flags." Okay, I'm good with the patriotic flags. Christian, all right, this is nothing else, something else that should not be brought up in commissions' chambers. Schools should not have religion instituted in their schools. Well, you can have a moment of silence regard, for any religion, but, um, you know, this bipartisan stuff applies to religion too. Evidently, it is written in many, in the Department of Education that it's not supposed to have education. There's supposed to be some division between state and, and school and, and religion. And, um, okay. So anyway, uh, all decides attributing, uh, the death of Charlie Kirk to a leftist person, which was not known at this time. He actually came from a Republican family. And, well, all sorts of things come out in the media since. Nonetheless, uh, this, this attack on the left wing- Nonetheless, this, this attack on the left wing is just horrible. It's divisive, you know? We're on the verge of maybe a civil war. And it's not the left wing, it's the right wing. It's people fomenting this divisiveness with hate, like Charlie Kirk and this gentleman. Thank you. Have a good night.
Next speaker. Gretchen Ziegler.
My name is Gretchen Ziegler, and I live in Melbourne, Florida. I'm here to speak about a really important community issue that this councilman Chandler Langvin, I believe, is misusing his public office and possibly even public funds to overstep the bounds of his supposedly nonpartisan position. A good leader tries to bring people together and focuses on common ground. Langvin sponsoring this partisan march and his online push for division and tension in our shared community is unacceptable. This publicly elected official has an obligation to represent all of his constituents. The subject of Langvin's march, Charlie Kirk, was seen as a politically divisive individual, and he had no ties to the city of Palm Bay, Brevard County, or even the state of Florida. Is deciding to have a march for him here an attempt to use a man's death and a family's grief to forward Langvin's own political aspirations? This decision adds fuel to a conflict from what we really need from our leaders is a push for collaboration in our community. If Langvin is set on officially sponsoring a march to honor victims of political violence, why not have a march for the men, women, and children who died on September 11th? Or the assassination of Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband in Minnesota? Langvin could choose to honor school shooting victims instead. Where was his passion when five students were shot on FSU's campus this past April? Brevard County has strong ties to heroic people right here at home. Astronauts, law enforcement, firefighters, not one but two military bases full of honorable service members. We have heroes in the areas of environmental protection, community service, and equality. There are so many individuals in our own backyard whose service has been forgotten. Why wouldn't Langvin choose to champion someone closer to home? Instead, he has chosen to use his taxpayer-funded position to foster a right versus left push in our community. Demonizing an entire demographic to suit his narrative of left-wing evil breeds distrust and conflict between neighbors and is a hateful and irresponsible action for a public servant. I urge you to take action toward making sure that Palm Bay's city council is known for fostering togetherness and not division. Thank you.
Carlos McCauley.
Thank you for listening to me. I'm Carlos McCauley, 11964 Brookside Street Northeast, and I am, I'm a Brevard Democrat. I'm not wearing my Brevard Democrat shirt, which I usually do. Anyway, on September 10th, just before four o'clock, I got a notice on my computer, because I'm a YouTube viewer of podcasters on YouTube, that Charlie Kirk had been shot. And I knew it was going to be a bad day, because on Wednesdays, I typically am between five o'clock and seven o'clock in front of Chili's at Babcock and Palm Bay Road protesting. And my signs read like this. Stop Project 2025, Unite America. Impeach, convict, remove. My other sign says billionaires want Americans to be slaves. Elon Musk. My other sign says Trump sucks. Unite America. Putin kills critics, 4547 wants to do it too. Unite America. My other signs say, who is on Jeff's list? Due process. All persons deserve due process. Apathy is not an option. Jury mandor. Free for all or ban? Free DC and LA of Trump. Brevard Dems, join us. Do these sound like extreme ideas?
Sir, sir, sir.
We're all Americans, aren't we? We are all Americans.
Just a second, I'm going to ask that the audience does not engage with the speakers. Thank you. Carry on, sir.
Okay. So on Wednesday, I went to protest, as typical, and, you know, people honk, they give us the thumbs up, they give us the thumbs down, they give us the bird. And as we were closing up, one of the patrons came out of Chili's, and he was hot, very hot. And as we were packing up, we had one guy who was still protesting, he had his placards up, and he started yelling at this lone protester and blaming him for Charlie Kirk's death. And it got ugly. Fortunately, nothing happened. And that's all I have.
Next speaker. Kevin Vakjana.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I haven't been to council meetings in a while, work a lot, so to come out here tonight to talk about this gives me goosebumps, but let's talk. I stand before you today as a polit, not as a politician, not as, but as a neighbor, a father, a proud member of the Palm Bay community. My family moved here in 2009. Like many of you, we were seeking a place that we can grow and raise our children, live with hope for the future. And when we arrived, I quickly fell in love with Palm Bay, not just because of the beautiful neighborhoods, but because of the warmth, the generosity, the spirit of the people who call this place home. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of investing in this community. I started several businesses here, including a system of living facilities. We have seen firsthand the compassion and the care our citizens show for one another. In 2018, because of my deep love for the city, I reached out to Brian Anderson and Thomas Guam, and together we established a census group that played an essential role in getting the Palm Bay War Bond passed. That effort was proof of what we can accomplish when we unite around our community. And that is why I'm here today. This Saturday, there is an event planned in our city that does not aim to unite us, but to separate us. It has been framed as a march for one side against another, but I ask, is this really what we want for our city? Is that what we want for our children to witness? Neighbors standing against neighbors? We all know that America is stronger when we stand together, not when we tear each other apart. Palm Bay is a microcosm of a great country. We are diverse, hardworking, and resilient. Our differences, political, cultural, or personal, are not our weakness, they are strengths when we choose to listen, respect, and learn from one another. Thank you.
Get comfy. Sorry, it's warm. Okay. Hi, my name's Bree, I'm a resident of Melbourne, so not from Palm Bay, but born and raised in Melbourne. Palm Bay's part of my home. So if you're not a Nazi, why does Punch Nazis threaten you? If you're not racist, why does Make Racist Afraid Again threaten you? The way you die does not honor the way you lived. Alright, and the big part. It is wildly inappropriate to me that anyone in Florida would bother to host a Charlie Kirk march and champion such a hateful and divisive individual. It is beyond irresponsible to claim Kirk was a victim of left-wing evil. He was a victim of gun violence and shouldn't have been. To celebrate someone who spewed such hatred creates more division. If Kirk was a little boy in elementary school, we would have forgotten about him at this point. So please allow me to give you a sample of some of his ideas and beliefs. If you really agree with any of this, I think you should do some serious self-reflection. I think it's worth it to have a cost of, unfortunately, some gun deaths every single year so that we can have the Second Amendment to protect our other God-given rights. I can't stand empathy. I think empathy is a made-up, new-age term that, it does a lot of damage, but it is very effective when it comes to politics. Interesting. Reject feminism. Submit to your husband, Taylor Swift. You're not in charge. Men deserve to always control their female partners, and females should always be submissive to their male partners. There is no separation of church and state. It's a fabrication. It's a fiction. It's not in the Constitution. It's made up by secular humanists. I just think it's disgusting that an elected nonpartisan official would try to champion someone who is so hateful. Yeah.
Isabella.
Hello, I'm Isabella Olander, and I live in Melbourne. I have been a resident here for my entire life, grew up here, went to every single school here, and you know what we had to do on the regular? We had to practice for school shootings on the regular. I had to take time out of my learning day on the regular to practice for gun violence that would probably happen, because it's Florida, right? So my questions are, are you guys also marching for all the people that were killed in school shootings? All the children, all the lives that were lost? Did you ever hold a march for the Parkland shooting? Are you going to be holding a march for Trey Reed? The twenty-one-year-old man found hung in Delta State University just recently. He was found hung by a tree, beaten to a pulp. A black man, a twenty-one-year-old black man who had his entire life ahead of him. Are you going to also be marching for him? Because your march, this nonpartisan march that you want to do, is not nonpartisan. It is completely MAGA-driven, it is completely wrong to be marching for a man who's spread so much hate into the world, who said all of those quotes that you just heard. Those were legitimate quotes that Charlie Kirk had said to people, to us Americans. He did not care about women, he did not care about colored individuals, and all he did was spread hate. So to have a march honoring this man is completely insane, and to have you guys backing it, any one of a council member, to be backing it is crazy, honestly. And as a youth, I'm really scared for my future, because I continuously have to live in fear of this gun violence that we obviously can see is true. Thank you.
Next speaker. Cynthia Saturday.
I'm Cindy Saturday. I live at 5150 Palm Bay, 5150 Dixie Highway, Palm Bay. And I'm here about this honoring Charlie Kirk. His quotes are, "Black women do not have the processing power to be taken seriously. You have to go steal a white person's slot." I cannot stand the word empathy. I think empathy is made-up, new-age term and does not, does a lot of damage. We made a huge mistake when we passed the Civil Rights Act in 1960s. MLK was awful, he's not a good person. If I see a black pilot, I'm going to be like, boy, I sure hope he's qualified. LGBTQ is a social contagion. We need armed militias to prevent the diminishing and decreasing of white demographics. Is this the man you want to honor? From 2016, as far as this evil left violence, from 2016 to 2020, fifty-four instances of violence and alleged assaults and threats where Trump was explicitly invoked, was forty-one echoing Trump and thirteen in defiance of Trump. Forty-one pro-Trump-inspired violence, acts of violence. The last five years, eighty-one people have been killed by political violence in America. The right-wing terrorists account for more than half of those murders, fifty-four percent. Are you going to honor those fifty-four percent during your march? Thank you, have a good day.
Next speaker. Ruth Coffold.
I am actually in support of this march for Charlie Kirk. I'm a TPUSA Faith Brevard County Hub Leader. We believe in Charlie Kirk's mission to restore America back to its godly roots, including the Constitution, of which Thomas Jefferson had no part. He was in France at the time, he didn't write any part of that Constitution. He wrote the Declaration, he did a great job. So the separation of church and state doesn't exist in any founding documents in this country. It was a phrase that Thomas Jefferson wrote in a personal letter to the Danbury Baptists. There is, what, one of the things that we cherish so much is godly America, because our America was founded on godly principles. Our founding fathers read the Bible cover to cover every single year. Our children learned from it every single day in their schoolroom, because it was the mandatory schoolbook in America, in addition to the other catechisms that we had that would teach us all about our founding documents. Our forefathers did not get off the Mayflower until they had a founding document, and it, they claimed this land for Christianity. So this phrase, the, the part of the Constitution that says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." No mention of separation, no mention of state or church. So Chandler and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of things, but I agree with what he is doing. He is honoring victims that this group created. He is honoring the same victim, Charlie Kirk, that did not deserve to be murdered in any way, shape, or form by any person for any reason, just because they did not like his free speech. So if you want your free speech, you might as well give a little grace to someone else's free speech. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Kristin Junakis.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm going to kind of echo some of what Dan said when he first started it, because you had a, a former elected official start this round, you can have a former elected end this round. As an elected official, it is absolutely shameful to put out a flyer like this that is so divisive. is so divisive. You were elected to represent the entire community. You don't get to decide, I only want to represent those that believe this, the exact same way I do, those that follow my politics. You have a constituency of over, if I'm not mistaken, we've got about 160,000 residents in the city of Palm Bay? 170,000? However many it is, not all of them are MAGA-right. Not all of them are extreme-left. I personally consider myself to be a fiscal conservative and a social Democrat. You can be both. I'm about as middle of the road as you can get. But when I saw this and read some of the horrific comments that were being put out on social media by a sitting elected official on this body, it was shameful. The mayor constantly praises the great city of Palm Bay and how wonderfully inclusive we are. And one of your cohorts puts out crap like this. Is that the wonderful city of Palm Bay that you want to live in? That says, "We're going to take care of the, you know, we're going to..." You want to support Charlie Kirk? Go for it. Personally, I didn't agree with 98% of what he said, but he had the right to say it. You, as an individual, have the right to say what you want about Mr. Kirk, but the minute you put commissioner next to your name, it becomes a function of the city. How much, how much in-city funds were, have been expended for this march on Saturday? Are we having to pay police? Did we have to pay for any of the flyers that have been put out? If this was taken out of taxpayer dollars, you're in violation of the law. And this is thoroughly disgusting.
Thank you. Next speaker. Lisa Parks. Lisa Parks.
Hello. Excuse me. Uh, Lisa Parks, I live at 690 Loffler Circle and...
Can you speak into the mic, Ms. Parks?
Yes. Wow, there's a lot of division going on here. I, um... Everybody up here is saying you, they, and we, and I don't agree that you, you should not be able to use the city council for anything personal like that. And, and this march is just reprehensible. You know, if you want to have a march to repri, to honor victims of violence in all categories, I, I'm, I'm for that. We can do that, but no, you know, uh... People up here saying that Charlie Kirk was very divisive and that he was only evil. You picked certain things to say just out of context. I could do that about anything, anything you, other people say. At the same time, he did have the right to his beliefs and to state them. And we all have that right, but we have to do it respectfully and know that we all have to be together. So I, I urge everyone to stop saying they and we, you know. I gotta, everybody says they killed Charlie Kirk. No, they didn't. One individual did. They said they killed those people in Minnesota. No, an individual did. You have to hold people responsible for their decisions and hold yourself responsible for yours. And then if everybody would just be respectful and try to show that, Palm Bay is really going to be the city that we advertise it to be.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thomas Redman. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Thomas Redman. I live at 1867 Shannon Street Northwest. I stand before you as somebody who deeply loves our community. And I'm committed to our community and to unity and to respect. And as a devoted Christian, I also want to express how much I admire and respect Charlie Kirk and his Christian values. And I believe he would want me to defend the values he stood for. This is my primary motivation for being here today. I've remained private and out of politics for the past couple of years, but the gravity of this issue compels me to speak out today, even though I risk putting myself on the radar of a more authoritarian group of people. I come before you to address a matter that deeply concerns me. A flyer has been circulated by our fellow council member, Chandler Langivan, titled "March for Charlie Kirk and All Victims of Left-Wing Evil." This flyer promotes a march that is fundamentally divisive and contrary to Christian values of love, unity, and respect for all. In the flyer, it states, "We'll gather at City Hall at 9:30 a.m. and read the names of all Americans killed recently by left-wing policies and pray for the Kirk family." Notice, "and pray for the Kirk family." This phrasing unfortunately places the Kirk family second and diminishes Charlie Kirk's death. It makes it pretty clear that this is personally politically motivated and not in the best interests of our city. As Christians, we're called to love and respect all people, and we must ensure that our city reflects these values. Charlie Kirk would want this matter to be handled correctly and for us to focus on unity rather than dividing people into right-wing or left-wing camps. I think everybody else speaking tonight is off-base. I'm here tonight for one reason. I urge this council tonight to censure Councilman Langivan, not only... to send a message of unity, but to guarantee future generations in Palm Bay will not have to have this hateful speech. By doing so, we reinforce the values that will guide us toward a more united and respectful community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I prepared a statement. I wasn't sure what order you wanted to go in, if Councilman Langivan wanted to maybe chime in or...
So I, I believe you, you brought this forth. I'll, I'll start with you, then I'll, I'll have other council members weigh in.
Thank you, Mayor. So September 10th was a deeply sad day for me and I, and for our country. An American lost his life to evil. As a father and a husband, my heart breaks for the family left behind. Violence against life and liberty, I believe, weakens our nation. It does not strengthen it. And what we face today is more than a political division. It is a struggle over the values that hold us together. As an elected official, I would be dishonest if I said I never worry about my own safety. Yet despite those fears, I remain committed to serving Palm Bay with pride and resolve. Leadership has been a constant in my life, in business, in family, in community service, and now as your deputy mayor. I've learned that leadership is not about giving orders. It's about inspiring, guiding, and empowering others. I am a conservative, but I do know I serve on a nonpartisan council, and I take that responsibility seriously. I did not step forward to serve to engage in national, global politics. I stepped forward to serve Palm Bay, to balance the budget, grow our economy, improve our roads and infrastructure, and provide first-class police and fire services. That is the work I believe our residents expect. We are not activists. Activists advocate for causes. Elected officials are entrusted to govern, to represent everyone, balance needs, uphold the law, and make practical decisions. Blurring those lines divides our community and distracts from the work Palm Bay needs. Councilman Langivan, like all elected officials, has a right under the First Amendment to express his views. Others also have the right to respectfully disengage. I believe in the Constitution and our First Amendment rights. Yet just because we can't say something does not always mean we should. Words carry weight, and we have a duty to use them thoughtfully. Our residents deserve leaders who govern without division or hateful rhetoric. Civility is not weakness, it is strength. Tonight, I ask all of us, including myself, to recommit to that higher standard, to model respect even in disagreement, and to work to heal divisions rather than widen them. I also hope that in the future, any council member sinks council consensus before sponsoring events or advertising events on city property. The scheduled march by Councilman Langivan appears to be a city-sanctioned event. It is not. It is not supported by this board. I have received hundreds of emails and calls about the march, and although I do not participate on social media, I am aware that it is alive and well. And, uh, and a lot of the, uh, a lot of the calls of concern I've, I've received are from conservatives. Citizens of business alike have expressed concern, and potential industry has questioned whether Palm Bay is a safe place to invest. Palm Bay is growing, diverse, and full of promise. It deserves leaders who reflect its best qualities, just to name a few: integrity, empathy, kindness, consistency, and steadfast commitment to a better future. To my colleagues, I challenge you to be that leader for Palm Bay. Thank you.
Councilman Langivan.
All right. Well, obviously, I disagree with you, Deputy Mayor, on a lot of things. And quite frankly, I was elected. I ran on what I ran on. I ran on conservative values. I didn't, I wasn't dishonest about that at all. There's actually some articles about there that made it very clear exactly who I am. Some of them are actually exaggerated, but, uh, the reality is, is I have a title, and if I want to lead in the community, sort of like how in 2020, hundreds of councilmen around the country decided to hold rallies and go to rallies and, and participate in rallies, then yes, the rally itself will not come onto the city property. It will remain on the sidewalk. We've had that conversation with staff. So you know what? I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and tell a story, okay? And, uh, for anyone out there that may have kids watching, there may be some parts of the story that are not super appropriate, so, you know, be advised. Uh, when I was 24, I was a young man. I was serving in the United States Navy, and I was deployed to Afghanistan. When we landed on the tarmac, the first brief that we got was our rules of engagement brief. Mind you, this was October, I think it was on my birthday, October 2nd, 2016. If you remember what, what year that was? That was a month before the election for Trump won, 2016. We were told by the JAG attorney, there's an election going on, so we can't let you do X, Y, and Z. And the policy coming down from the current administration is actually that, uh, even if you get engaged, he doesn't want the, the optics of anything bad happening or any possible civilian casualties in it, in the middle of an election. So we need you to just, you know, not do your job and come back. That's literally what the JAG attorney told us in the middle of a war zone. Well, right before I got there, five airmen were blown up by a motorcycle bomber because of the policies of that administration. Shortly afterwards, I was sitting in my barracks when a suicide bomber blew himself up on the base because the same policies from the same administration allowed 1,000 Afghan nationals unvetted onto our base and killed five Americans. And after 16 hours of dealing with that and having to get them all off the base and dealing with other bombers that ended up not detonating, we were starving and we finally got to go to chow. And I got to walk into the, the chow hall, but as I was doing that, it was the same chow hall that he blew himself up after. And I had to walk over the charged skin of the suicide bomber and the others because of policy. After that, I needed a break, so I transferred to the reserves, and I ended up taking a gap year so that I could go study left-wing evil. And yes, there is other types of evil in the world, but there's absolutely left-wing evil in the world. And let me tell you about it because I went and studied it. I don't talk about it a lot, but maybe I should. I went to countries around the world, four or five of them, that suffered in the past or currently under incredible left-wing evil. I went to Cambodia. When I was in Cambodia, I went to the killing fields where left-wing evil was responsible for killing 20% of an entire country's population. And when I was standing in the killing fields, I rubbed my hand against a palm tree that still had a lot, they put these little braids on them as memorials because they were killing so many people. They didn't have the ammunition in their guns to shoot people, so they bashed the heads of babies across a palm tree. Yes, that's a, that was a Marxist government, and that is what ultimately left-wing evil leads to. It happened in Cambodia. It actually happened in Afghanistan first, which is what led to all the chaos and turmoil in Afghanistan. It happened across Africa. It happened in Europe. It's not based off color or some other thing, as people mentioned in the crowd. It's affected countries of every color. Uh, there's a lot of people coming in makeshift rafts from Cuba, but I don't see a lot of people going to Cuba in boats. I, I wonder why that is. Um, it's responsible for starvation across the world. Estimated approximately 300 million people in less than a century have been killed by left-wing evil. And in every one of those countries, the same formula takes place, the same formula starts out. It starts out with a small group of people, and they start saying these crazy things. And everybody around them goes, well, they're just a small group of crazy people. But then those people take over the institutions. They take over the schools. They target it. They do a phenomenal job of it. They take over the professorships. They start indoctrinating the next generation of individuals, of students. Then they send those students back home, and those students rebel against their parents and say, "Why, why don't you believe in this? Why don't you have any empathy, this, that, and the other thing?" And then when the other side starts fighting back, and especially when they start gaining any traction, then it leads to violence. And then it starts happening, political assassinations, which is where we're at right now. There wasn't one political assassination. There was one successful. There was two attempts on the president's life. The third finally made contact. But let's also look at some of the other left-wing militias that have done so. Some of those school shootings that you talked about were done by them. They ambushed an ICE office recently in our country. So now we're to the stage in all these countries that I visited too, and I read the histories, and I went to their communism museums in every one of these countries, and I talked to people who lived through it. The same exact formula that happened in each and every one of those countries, from Pol Pot to the Spanish Civil War, to the Bolshevik Revolution in Russia. Every single one of them started the same way, and we entered a point the other day, a new phase in this evil ideologies movement to try to take over the United States of America. And I always thought that maybe their policies here, like the ones that got my brothers killed, um, and there's so many examples that you've heard of, like Abbey Gate, like Benghazi, like Extortion 17, but there's dozens and dozens that you haven't even heard of. Uh, you've only heard of the ones that go viral. The one that, the five that died on Boggerman in front of me, uh, there was a snippet in the news. It barely was even recorded in the Military Times. But then you look at all these other policies across the United States, soft-on-crime policies. The man who murdered Orina Zerutska had been in jail 12 or 14 times. ICE arrested a guy the other day who had been arrested in the United States 48 times. How are you able to be arrested 12 to 14 times on violent crimes and then get let back out in the community and murder somebody needlessly? Lake and Riley was a result of a porous open border that led to millions of unchecked, unvetted immigrants. And, okay, let's look at other examples since we want to take color out of it. There was just an illegal immigrant that came through the southern border that beheaded an Indian-American in Texas. We had another illegal immigrant that was given a driver's license in California, even though he can't speak English and can't understand the road signs, and he killed three Floridians. These are all examples that happened within weeks of what I always thought was bad policies. But then when you actually understand history and you look at how all these other countries and the formula that was used in those, you realize these aren't bad policies. Because if it was a bad policy and it happened once or twice, then they would go, wow, you know, this is kind of a bad policy. It's a failing policy. Let's correct it. Let's move it around. When you look at it, it's not bad policies. It is a force of evil in our country that is trying to disrupt and infuse chaos and do all, the same things that happen in all those other countries, to denigrate our heroes and our founding fathers, to break down the thread that makes America what it is. Because you can't change America if it's good. Nobody's going to want to change. So all these things and all this division and chaos that's sown by these left-wing policies are done on purpose to break the country down so that they can eventually... policies are done on purpose to break the country down so that they can eventually rebuild it in the utopian way that they think they're going to do it. But in every example, if history shows us, that all that leads to is starvation, death, more chaos. There's not been a single successful communist country, there's not been a single successful socialist country. And people are gonna go, oh, I'm not really communist. A lot of you probably think you're not communist, or that you're not socialist, but you're supporting an ideology that is being driven by people that are. And for 20 years, 20 years ago, actually 20 years ago, I was in school, like 15, 16 years ago, coming out of school, I was a standard American, young man that just wanted to be left alone. I believed in the Constitution, I liked the founding fathers, thought that was cool. And that's why I voted for the side that I thought was gonna be, you know, respected at the most. And I was absolute, for the past 15, 16 years, I have been, every single day, people say, if you're a Republican, you're terrible, you're a Nazi, you're a Nazi, you're this, you're that, it's on the news, it's in media, it's shoved down our throat, professors. I've heard professors say terrible things and these are the people that we want to... I've had high school teachers, I had a high school teacher that would say these things. This has been spewed into the minds of our youth for so long, and we never say anything back because as conservatives, we're taught, we are, we're good Christian people. And we're taught that in Christ, we just forgive and forget, we don't want confrontation. Turn and just let it go and let's move on. But for how many years do we do that? And at what stage of this equation do we as Christians say, yes, we can pray for you, and I do pray for you, and I actually pray for every single person in here. But at what point do we say, evil does exist in the world? There were warriors in the Bible. You can't be a Christian and believe in what you believe in without also believing that evil exists in the world. And so how do you stand up to that evil as well? And so I don't know all the answers to those questions, but when Charlie Kirk was killed, this is exact, this was put on my heart immediately and I ran with it. I didn't have the logistics worked out, I didn't have the plan worked out, it fell on my heart and I said, we're doing it. And I've gotten an outpouring of support from the community and we're gonna march. And I do think it's funny that there's people here yelling at me that were at the No Kings march, but that's a whole different scenario. So, quite frankly, gentlemen, whether you like it or not, whether you believe it or not, I'm gonna do something. If you're mad at me, be mad at me. If you disagree with me, I get it respectfully, it's okay, you can. But if God puts something on my heart, I'm gonna run with it. And that's just how it's gonna be.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselman Hammer?
Yeah, I had something written, but I think Deputy Mayor Jaffe kinda hit it on the head. What I do want to say is, tonight, we're not making a vote to let this happen. This isn't something that we can approve or deny. This is something that everybody needs to realize, we are five separate entities. We are coworkers up here. You guys are the bosses. So, this is something that, I mean, I'm gonna tell you guys right now, since the minute that I've met Chandler Langivan, he is, he probably has the most conviction in how he feels than anybody I've ever met. So what, this isn't something new, this is his feelings, he's felt since the day he was elected. Since before he was elected.
Ma'am, please.
But what I do want to say is, is we are separate up here. He is entitled to his voice, he is entitled to what he wants to say with his world around him. This is a part-time job. He didn't mention me, he didn't mention this council, he didn't mention us being involved in any way, shape, or form. This is something he's doing on his own, he is solid in his convictions, and that is something that us up here need to accept. It's not something that everybody agrees with, it's not something that everybody loves. Me, myself, I am a leader for everybody out there, whether you voted for me or not. I am going to back every single person up, whether I agree with you or I don't. I have some of my best friends that are on the other side. I am, I don't have the convictions of that. I am, I use my heart on everything and I will always use my heart on everything. How I feel outside of here and how I feel as a councilman might be two different things, but my time here up on council, I'm a representative of my bosses. Thank you.
Counselman Johnson?
All right. I'm smiling because there's so much that could be said, but I want to make sure I'm mindful of the time, so we don't have to continue the meeting. But it's not just our nation, but this whole world is in identity crisis. Like, there is no side, there is no wing. Like, even the term racism, like, there's only the human race. And we allow all these dogmas and we find comfort in trying to find something to identify with. I know myself, I try to find comfort in identifying in fraternities or comfort in identifying with this group or that group, but it's an identity crisis and it's deeply rooted into... I wanna speak to you, Counselman Langivan, because there's areas I do agree with you. There is evil, but evil doesn't have a color. That's like saying, I speak black. Like, no, like, I speak English, that's all there is. Like, there is no left or right to evil, evil's evil. And for my Christian population, Ephesians 6:12, it doesn't say left principalities or right principalities, it says principalities, rulers, and authorities. They don't say, ah, I'm gonna go towards them, I'm gonna go towards them. Like, no. Like, that's when we come into agreement with sin. It's as simple as, I go home, I have a rough day, and I'm taking it out on the family, and my wife can have, she has a moment. She can either meet me where I am with hate or with anger, or she can restore me with love. And that's what this council's trying to speak on, restoring everybody with love. You don't restore with divisive rhetoric or divisive speech, you restore with love. And how can we restore with love? It doesn't always have to be with preaching the gospel, you can show the gospel, and showing the gospel is showing love. Hey, let me share with you why I have this belief system, let me share with you why I feel this way about my ideology. I went to a Tapestry Network meeting and at first I wasn't accepted by it. It was ran by Pastor Paul Rossberry, and one of the things he said, they work closely with Turning Point USA, and one of the things he said was, we have to love the hell out of people. And with loving the hell out of people, that's not looking at them as evil or looking at Councilman Langivan as racist or evil or whatever the case may be, but recognizing whatever's on them, you have to love that off of them. It's not them. When we come into agreement, it reminds me, and I know everybody can relate with this, bear with me, when you think about the cartoons back in the day, they had the devil on one side, they had the angel or god on the other. Depending on what we agree with and what we come into terms with is what we're acknowledging. That's how sin works, that's how, you know, I can be looking at my wife and she's going off on me, and I can be looking at her and I overhear, say, hey, say something back, speak back. And the other side's like, nah, hold your tongue, just hear her heart and just let her speak and show her comfort. Women want security, show her comfort. So I can come into agreement with either one, and that's how it is, that's how these principalities work as well. And it goes all the way to the top of governing to the bottom, and that's what's going on right now. When I think about what's going on with Charlie Kirk, we can come into agreement with anything and everything, or we can say, hey, I agree with this portion, but I don't, I disagree with this portion. We're free thinkers, we're not meant to just identify with everything on a Republican Party or Democratic Party or on this council. Like, I'm best friends with some of the guys up here, and we disagree all the time, that's fine. That's fine. When you look into the Bible, for those of you who are Bible believers like myself, John the Baptist was assassinated. Jesus didn't go out marching, he went to solitude. And then after he went to, it's in Matthew, so you can just check it out. After he went to solitude, crowds followed after him, and he was filled with compassion and he healed them. We heal with love. Love conquers all, we forgive, we're meant to consistently forgive. Have these conversations with these people, Counselman Langivan, the same way you had conversations with me. You and I have sat down several times, disagreeing on some things, agreeing on other things, but we sat down, that's how you make... I see Daniel Costa in the back. I'm gonna give you a shout out, sir, you came out. And there's so many times we disagreed on stuff, but we still can have a conversation, that's the problem. Like, that's why I know COVID was about principalities, because it caused so much confusion and divisiveness amongst our nation. We were so united when it came to 9/11, and it's unfortunate that it came to that, but we were so united. There was no red or blue, there was red, white, and blue, we all bleed red, and that's all it comes down to. So Mayor, I know you're gonna take it from here, but I want to encourage each and every one of you, don't look at it as left-wing evil, right-wing evil. Evil's evil. There's a reason why the Epstein list hasn't been released, it's because there's names on there for everybody. So we can't try to say, no, that's what it is. So I'm open to talk to anybody, you know, it's public record, I changed from Democrat to nonpartisan because I don't want to identify with anything but Christ and just my belief, but I also want to make sure I share love with everybody in this audience and everybody outside of this audience. So, I apologize for being long-winded, this has been on my heart since I saw that wretched video of what happened to him. And that wasn't for political beliefs, that was to silence him, and that was spiritual warfare is what I'm telling you. That's exactly what that was. So I'm done, Mayor, I'm off my soapbox. I love all of you. Daniel Costa, I love you, brother. Bill Bennett, I love you. Pastor, all of y'all, I love y'all. Listen, Lance Fisher, I love you. Michael, I love you. I will have a conversation with y'all. Yep, I will talk with you after too, sir. I'll show you, because love is an action verb, so I'll have a conversation with you too, sir. So, that's all, I'm done. There you go.
Well, thank you, Counselman Johnson, I really appreciate your kind words, but I want to take this back. And this is about lifting up the Kirk family. This is about praying for the Kirk families, is the way I see it. I just want to pray over that family, right? Now, our words have power, and sometimes we miscommunicate with what we say. Perhaps things should be said in a different light. But going to your point, it is a spiritual warfare. And because of that, I went into the archives, and many things have been said about Charlie Kirk that have been misrepresented. Mr. Kirk was a believer and a brother in Christ. And so cue that video so that we can just take a look at what he said in an interview.
Yes, I wonder if by continuing to lie, they aren't about everything, they're driving all of us a little crazy.
Well, this is why your faith is the most important thing. Because for those of us that are Christians, it doesn't drive you crazy, you actually see what's going on, which is that we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against principalities and darkness and spirits, that there is a spiritual war here. And you're right, Tucker, I find people in this space that are not anchored to faith, anchored to Jesus, they do lose their mind. Because there is no rational or reasonable explanation for what the country is doing to itself or what we are experiencing. But if you then see and you know that there is a God and we are not Him, that there is an entire dimension of angels and demons and spirits that are constantly struggling around us, and that there is a supernatural dimension, as you mentioned, all of a sudden, that does then make sense. That does, it does not make any rational sense to shut down your schools so you could sacrifice the kids so the elderly can live. That makes no sense whatsoever. It makes no sense whatsoever to keep your marijuana dispensaries open and your alcohol shops open, but the church not essential. Only a demonic enterprise would do such a thing. Only a demonic enterprise would say that Easter and Pentecost are not essential, but race rioting and burning down a Wendy's is a central activity. And Tucker, you talk about this a lot, but for those of us that know the truth, we know that our God is a God of order and distinction. What is the first thing that God did? In the Hebrew scriptures, it says, well, and also our scripture in the original Genesis, Bereshit, which is, in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, and then he separated and he made sense, he made order out of chaos. Our God is a God of order, and order only comes with distinctions. And distinctions are necessary. Think about all the distinctions that God set up in the first six books of Genesis that are currently under attack. The distinction between male and female. The distinction between man and nature. The distinction between the holy and the profane. The distinction between good and evil. The distinction between infant and adult. These distinctions have always been what Western civilization were built upon, but it is Satan's goal to blur and eventually destroy those distinctions, because those distinctions of which we get order, and if you do not have that order, then you have the closest thing to satanic chaos here.
Thank you, I really appreciate that clip. In the archives, it is something that's a spiritual warfare. Counselman Langivan, your words have power, and I truly believe that if you could have worded this differently, I agree wholeheartedly that evil is evil. To categorize it, it's just plain old evil. And I can tell you this, that as someone that behaves Christ-like, that wants to follow Christ, we can always read different books and learn from our experience and read and gain knowledge. So I've read many books, and there's a book that's called Ezekiel. And in that book, it says, as surely as I live, says the sovereign Lord, I take no pleasure in the death of wicked people. That's God Himself saying, He takes no pleasure in the death of wicked people. I only want them to turn from their wicked ways so that they can live. And then he goes on and he says, turn. The Book of John says, for God so loved the world that he gave his one and only Son, not to condemn the world, but to save the world. You see, God is all about love. And if we're going to be Christ-like, we should be strong in our faith. We need to put on His armor, and that armor is love. For we're not fighting against flesh and blood, enemies, but against evil rulers and authorities in the unseen world, against mighty powers in this dark world, and against evil spirits in heavenly places. He goes on and he says, to imitate God, therefore in everything we do, because you are His children, live a life filled with love, following the example of Christ. He loved us and offered Himself as a sacrifice for us. So you see, I can tell you that it is contrary. You satisfying your words that make you feel that it is powerful in a sense of condemning others is what you should be fighting against. So I say, let the Holy Spirit guide your lives. Then you won't be doing it with what your sinful nature craves. Your sinful nature wants to do evil, which is the opposite of what the Spirit wants. And that is what's going on here. The two forces are constantly going against each other. And so what is your sinful nature? Well, let me break that down to you. It's sexual immorality, it's impurity, it's lustful, pleasures, idolatry, sorcery, hostility, quarreling, jealousy, creating strife, selfish ambitions, dissension, and moreover, division. And it goes into drunkenness and, but the Spirit produces love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. There's no law against these. Those who belong to Christ Jesus have nailed the passions and desires of their sinful nation, of their nature, to the cross and crucified them there. Since we are living by the Spirit, let us follow the Spirit's leading in every part of our lives. I can assure you... I can assure you that if we do follow Christ, we're to imitate Him. We're to live a life full of love, following His example. He loved us and offered Himself as a sacrifice. So I encourage you, I implore of you, to fight the flesh and let the Spirit and your words tailored to love the residents of our community. Be kind, be gentle, be loving, represent the entire community as a whole. And if we're gonna be Christ-like or be categorized as a Christian, that's a huge responsibility. That responsibility goes with your speech, and I speak to everyone, because we can't choose what God wants you to do. He says, pray for your enemies. You can't choose who to pray for. If you're going to wear a title, if you're gonna declare that the Lord is your God, then you surrender all aspects of your life, to include your flesh. And with that being said, I do agree that we need to watch what we say and understand that our words are not only powerful, but they have consequences, and they can create love and prosperity, or they can divide a community. That being said, had you said and, and promoted this as, listen, we're gonna have a prayer vigil for the Kirk family, and we're gonna gather and, and walk from Walmart onto the sidewalk of City Hall, that's a whole nother text. That's a whole nother meeting. But the way you demonstrated it, brother, I, I gotta tell ya, and you're right, I don't I thank Deputy Mayor for bringing this out, 'cause I know the community is at, at large are, are fighting over this. So when you do have your discussion and your prayer, talk about the love. Talk about what Jesus said, in that they will know that you're My disciples by how you love one another. And I end with that. Is there anything else you wanted to close with, Deputy Mayor?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so we've handled number three. we're now on unfinished business, number one? Am I tracking that? Oh, as you were. We're on public comments.
Donald Hook.
Doug Hook, Mayor Poston Drive Northeast, Palm Bay. Uh, as a little bit of a change of pace, I would like to thank the Council for their actions last meeting on voting for the public broadcasting to be open, or the public comments to be broadcast again. It's vital that open communication between the people and their representatives be protected. As another change of pace, I would like to provide some information that may not be known regarding the importance of native plants. Around ninety percent of plant-eating bugs are considered specialists, which means that they eat only one family of plant, or in some cases, only one specific plant, period. Since Florida's specialist bugs grew up around Florida native plants, that means most of them have specialized on said native plants. Native plants support around thirty-five times the, uh, our, times the amount of attacks that non-natives do. Because of that, when we plant non-native plants, we are actually lowering the amount of bugs available for our favorite birds to eat. It's been shown that the biggest factor to the number of birds in the area is actually the number of, the amount of food available. So by planting native plants, we can actually support a larger number of native birds, which in turn support a large number, our, support a note, that, support a large number of native bugs, which in turn support a large number of native birds. This is relevant tonight, considering there were a number of agenda items, uh, that affect our currently wild spaces in Palm Bay. On the table were proposals to develop over three hundred and fifty acres of undeveloped land, and additional proposals to rezone public lands that are also currently wild spaces. You've heard from multiple constituents tonight how important those undeveloped spaces actually are to the community. As you ponder the items that were on the agenda tonight and will be coming back onto the agenda in the future, I sincerely ask that you not just consider the possible economic benefits of these redevelopment acts, but to also consider the economic downfalls that come with them. It is easier to conserve what natural spaces we currently have in place than it is to attempt to restore them in the future. Given that native plant landscaping is only just the beginning to be popular, the likelihood of wild spaces potentially lost from decisions made in these chambers are quickly offset, are, are not going to be quickly offset by actions, uh, from the, or the community. Our plants, bugs, and birds that make Florida great rely on us, us and our leadership to look out for them, and this council has opportunities to do so when these items return to the agenda. In closing, I want to again thank the Council for their time and their consideration of both in protecting our, our important natural spaces. I would also like to thank Deputy Mayor Javi in specific for supporting my application for the Palm Bay Sustainability Advisory Board. And I would also like to encourage any fellow Palm Bay citizens to participate in the next week's Sustainability Advisory Board meeting right here in this chamber next Thursday at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street Southwest. I've got six items to address. Number one, I would like to thank my city council for re, uh, rescinding their decision on not broadcasting public comments. Number two, this action will help in promoting transparency and trust in my local government. Number three, it would have been nice if that decision could have been made because that's what we as the constituents wanted. Number four, now if we could get the public comments back at the end of the meeting, that would be fantastic. Number five, so one more time, thank you. This is the type of action even Charlie Kirk could be ha, could be proud of. Communication is the key to transparency. Now, different topic. You rearranged tonight's agenda, so I could not have asked you to speak on a consent agenda item before you voted on it and cleared it. Just letting you know that sometimes you have the chicken before the egg or the egg before the chicken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Lance Fisher, address exempt. Last council meeting, Chief Spears embarrassed his counsel and the city manager. Chief Spears' statements at the podium highlighted his lack of experience and incompetence in his position. For failing to meet with Sergeant Frank Tobar's family, he said he didn't know that this was going to be public, though the city's own website invites the public to the council chambers and provides websites for viewing. Yet it was on the agenda and discussed at the August twenty-first council meeting. It was posted on the September fourth agenda for the council meeting. Most sergeants, all lieutenants, and all command staff knew that these are public. Commander, or Chief Spears also couldn't answer a simple question regarding a public records request that was submitted in July. And Mayor, when you sent him outside to speak to the family of Tamara Hatcher, Chief Spears didn't have the fortitude or integrity to tell them that PD has already justified the abuse she endured while handcuffed. It's not Jeff Spears' fault. Five years ago, he was a sergeant. He lacks the experience of being a deputy chief, let alone a chief. City manager, you listed the training as part, of his training as part of the reason for appointing him to chief, specifically his attendance to the FBI National Academy. Schools are just words on a piece of paper and don't tell the story. The chief deputy in Hillsborough County was fired for allegedly cheating on his FBI NA coursework. City manager, you mentioned that Chief Spears was endorsed by the FOP. Here's a text message between me and the FOP president on April ninth, in which the FOP president indicated, "Maybe time for a fresh outside chief when Mario is done." I'm sure he, he doesn't have much longer. So just a few months ago, even the FOP president suggested an outside chief would be a good, uh, good for the agency. So what changed? Well, he was investigated for sex on duty and sending inappropriate pictures on duty, dismissable offenses. City manager, I provide you two anonymous letters that I received in my mailbox, indicated no officers or board members were ever asked about any endorsement. It was alleged that his endorsement by the FOP president was strong-armed to save his job. For allegations of sex on duty and inappropriate pictures, he lost thirty vacation hours, not even a suspension. FDLE classifies, FDLE classifies nude pictures on duty as a moral character violation and a serious offense, which could lead to revocation of the officer's law enforcement certificate. The department is required to notify FDLE when, so that they then can administer their own discipline. Did they? Police departments throughout Florida have, have terminated employees for such offenses. Remember, during Chief Agello's tenure, a police officer was arrested for sex on duty with a thirteen-year-old, another was investigated for sexual assault by FDLE, and was, and a third was investigated by BCSO. When these types of headlines, with these types of headlines, the chief and deputy chiefs should do everything to prevent these incidents from terminating, uh, including terminating police officers. There are just too many unanswered questions surrounding the need to appoint Chief Spears nine months bef, nine months before Chief Agello's retirement. There must be change within the PD leadership, and that can only be done from a nationwide search from an outside chief that does not have the internal loyalty that plagues this city.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yeah, we, can, yeah, Mr. Fisher just said that we need some answers and some transparency, so Chief, would you like to come up and give us some answers? I think we have some, a set of snippets. And I've gotten here, you know, I did some research on discipline in the state of Florida. I've got a report from the CJSTC from January to September of this year across the state, no fewer than ninety-five agencies, and ninety-five pages of disciplinary have had officer discipline. So trying to paint this picture that somehow, you know, a police department because of disciplinary issues that have been, have been dealt with, we're gonna talk about that tonight, is out of character or unusual, or some indication that there is an incompetence or leadership is not the truth. And Chief, will you respond to the instances brought up tonight by Mr. Fisher?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, appreciate the, the time to speak for a few minutes to get some clarity and some factual content based on the, um, headliners that were in this presentation to promote a personal agenda. So the first one regarding, let's start with Deputy Chief Spears with regarding Ms. Tobar and our initiative as a city to name a structure after the late Sergeant Frank Tobar. Um, conversation went well with Ms. Tobar, with Ms. Tobar. Deputy Chief Spears spoke with her, with her. She understood why things were on hold in terms of announcing it to her, for those reasons to not get anybody's hopes up high. No intent was there, no ill intent was there. She completely understood and was grateful and is fully supportive of the initiative should it happen. So with regard to the three officers that were mentioned on this PowerPoint slide by Mr. Lance Fisher, so the first one, yes, leave was taken from that person. That person was also demoted from supervisor to the rank of officer. Leave, taking personal time off leave of, of, from an individual, from an employer, from an officer, is considered a form of suspension. It's a legal term. Now, with all of that, in terms of putting out other responses and other agencies throughout the state, throughout the county, uh, throughout Florida, throughout the country, in terms of what FDLE promotes, in terms of up to, could be, those are the key words, right, that people need to pay attention, pay attention to in terms of what's being put out there to spread divisiveness and hate against our police department. So that incident was taken care of. The incident with Mr. Archer in terms of sex with a child, a juvenile on duty, fully investigated. We came up, we came upon the information, I notified the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, they responded immediately, they conducted a criminal investigation, they had charges, enough probable cause, to arrest this individual for said crime. He was arrested in our police department in front of his peers, and shortly thereafter, terminated from employment with the city of Palm Bay. Therefore, even more, I notified the commission of the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, requesting that this individual's certification to be a law enforcement officer in the state of Florida be revoked permanently. And a short time ago, I was notified by the commission, they did just that. So that individual can no longer be a cop here in the state of Florida. We move on to the third example that Mr. Fisher provided. That individual, just like anybody else, got an allegation or complaint that was against him. Every American, it was stated earlier, is due, is owed due process, right, based on a complaint or an allegation. We received it, FDLE worked with it, they conducted an investigation to see where it went, put all the facts together, presented to the state attorney's office. The state attorney came back with a decision, not enough facts or circumstances to pursue the offense that was listed. Case was closed. We conducted an internal investigation after that investigation to see if there was any moral conduct issues or any other policy violations. There was none. During that whole process, that officer was suspended during that whole process, which took several months. That officer was reinstated, back to full duty. Let me add this. Ten months later, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, that officer was one of two of our officers. He could have been upset, he could have been disgruntled because an allegation was made against him, but he wasn't. That officer took a bullet for members of our community that day, from an individual that hours earlier killed two other people, and then a third after shooting our officers that day, until we were able to finally get ahold of that individual and take him away. So what we have here, there was so much of it being spoken earlier this evening about hate, divisiveness, rhetoric. What we have here has been a year and a half worth of dangerous rhetoric, dangerous rhetoric towards the men and women that donned this uniform that says Palm Bay Police by one individual for our personal agenda. Now last, earlier this week, we had an officer off duty, about an hour and a half away from us, off duty from a different police department, murdered in a convenience store while purchasing something at the counter, shot in the back twenty-four times because of hate. Yesterday, three officers in the state of Pennsylvania murdered, two others critically wounded because of hate and divisiveness, that this individual, Lance Fisher, a federal cop that he claims to be, right, is attacking our men and women every day to divide our community with the men and women that support them and have been serving them for as long as I've been here and longer. That is the culture that the Palm Bay Police Department has here, with our residents here in Palm Bay. And I will not stand, and I denounce this hate that he's been spewing for a year and a half. I denounce it, this dangerous rhetoric that jeopardizes the lives of our officers every day, on top of the dangers that they deal with on a daily basis with the job. It's unnecessary, all to promote his personal agenda to spread divisiveness within our community. Our community is more united with our law enforcement, now you can see, than ever before. How do I know? 'Cause I break bread with our community leaders in the city. I communicate that with them regularly. I denounce it, I rebuke it in the name of my Lord and Savior, because number one priority for this community to be safe is the men and women that donned this uniform. I swore in four officers today, four more officers, brand new, to protect and serve this community, and they will. They will put their life on the line for those they don't even know who they are, and for those that despise them because they've been arrested, guess what? If it's in that position, they will risk their life for them as well, because that's what they do. That's the oath that they take and what we've taken. So personal agendas aside, enough is enough. Enough is enough. I'm not gonna tolerate it anymore, when it jeopardizes the men and women that do this every day to protect each and every one of us in this room and in our city. That is all.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Todd Dalpro.
So, can I, can we pause for a quick second?
Yes.
So I was asked, new, I'm new, right, come in as an outsider, asked to look into a lot of things, and we have, we've been looking, as you guys know, as the community knows, into everything. I've spent in earnest four months looking in the police department, because I can't take anything for granted. I've met with Mr. Fisher, I've gotten nothing but anonymous letters, I've gotten nothing but, oh, it's anonymous, it's a dead end, it's a snapshot. I hear we're not gonna get accredited because the
I hear we're not going to get accredited because the department's so horrible. So I go meet with the accreditation board, recommended for full reaccreditation at the highest tier in the state of Florida. So, you know, running down these leads to answer the question, it didn't stay for the response. I've looked, I've spent time, not the first one. We've talked to the federal government, we've talked to the state government, we've talked to different agencies. I don't know where these accusations are coming from. To date, I find no credibility whatsoever in the accusations that get spoken here at the dais. And we're doing the heavy lifting, I've done the heavy lifting of looking into it. So from my perspective, as your city manager, my recommendation and my belief in the chief and the deputy chief and our police department stands as it is. We have a credible, solid agency. Yes, we've had issues like any other department, every other organization, that have been appropriately dealt with and have continued to be appropriately dealt with, and I have great hope for the structure, the training, and the commitment of our officers at the Palm Bay Police Department.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Pat Daupre.
Pat Daupre, four-ten George's Avenue. On a lighter note, reminder that this is Constitution Month, and yesterday, the seventeenth, was Constitution Day. We have the most amazing, incredibly longest-lasting constitution in the world. The average constitution lasts about seventeen years. It's founded on Judea-Christian principles. The founders were raised and trained in scripture. They study and quoted it in their own writings over forty percent of the time. Thirty-four percent of the Constitution is from the Bible. There are thousands upon thousands of quotes and decisions from founders, statesmen, presidents, judges, legislature, governors, Supreme Court, confirming that this country, our America, is a Christian nation. But in lieu of what happened last week, I give you this partial quote from Rabbi David Leipen. "Without a vibrant and vital Christianity, America is doomed, and without America, the West is doomed." Which is why, "I, an Orthodox Jewish rabbi devoted to Jewish survival, the Torah, and Israel, am so terrified of American Christianity caving in." Charlie Kirk loved this nation. He wanted to make America great again. Charlie was an example of commitment, boldness, and fearless love for Christ and his cause. He spoke truth unashamedly. He wasn't afraid to step into the public square to contend for that truth with courage and conviction, and to remind us that the ideas we hold matter. Charlie loved or lived under the principle that everyone has the right to speak, that everyone has a voice, whether we like it or not, and that's from the First Amendment. He loved those, even the ones that disagreed with him. In John twelve-twenty-four, Jesus spoke. He said, "I tell you the truth, unless a grain of wheat falls into the earth and dies, it remains alone, or only a single seed. But if it dies, it bears much fruit, it produces many seeds." And a reminder that the Japanese commander in World War II who attacked us in Pearl Harbor, I'm sure you guys remember, or maybe you don't, he said, "I fear we have awakened the sleeping giant." Erica Kirk mentioned the same thing. She said, "The person who did that, we fear, or he fears, that he's awakened a sleeping giant." Monique Miller mentioned at the end, she wrote on Truth, I don't know what program it was. It says, "As like many truth-tellers in history, Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated, and the roaring voice of a martyr was unleashed."
Thank you.
Same thing here.
Mark Miller.
Stiffening it up over here. Mark Miller, eight-nine-eight Nelson Avenue. Root definition of government is the system and process by which we do business as a people. Politics, root cause definition, is a belief system or the ideology that we have that drives how we believe our government or our system should operate. So as Christians, we operate, or should operate, by a belief system that's rooted in the Word of God. And while none of us are perfect at it, right? Because our belief system is rooted in the Word of God and we're influencing government, it is impossible to keep the church out of the state. It is impossible. People vote for candidates who align with their values. I vote for folks who align with my values, and my expectation is, if they win, that they will influence and operate the system by which we do business as a people to be in alignment with my beliefs, which are biblical in base, right? I don't elect you to make everybody happy. I elect you to do what's best for our community and serve in that role. If you make everybody happy, man, we water it all down and we just lose it all. It doesn't work. You can't make everybody happy. I believe in the importance of strong biblical families as defined by the Word. I believe in strong biblical moral values and against abortion and socialism and Sharia law and all the other things that we talked about. I'm against condoning a life of purposeful sinfulness, right? And I believe fully that blessed is the nation whose God is Lord. So for those who share those values that are elected in the position, I expect them to uphold those values, whether it makes everybody happy or not. And likewise, if someone gets elected who's opposed to my values, then I'll fall back to First Timothy chapter two, where we are to pray for our kings and all of those in authority, whether we agree with them or not, that we may live a peaceful and quiet life in all godliness and holiness. And I find it interesting that unity only works when conservative Christians are yielding to their beliefs, otherwise it's labeled as hate speech. Jesus did love everyone, but he said, "Go and send them more." The biblical definition of love is not acceptance of everything, and it's important to know that. As a pastor, I don't get to pick and choose. God wrote the Word of God. He provided it to me. There's stuff in there I don't like. There's stuff in there I may not agree with in my flesh. But because of my love for my congregation and anybody that attends our church, we speak from the whole truth and nothing but the truth, whether it's well-received or not, because it's God's Word, He created, and that's what we need to follow, and I expect that to be. So thank you for broadcasting these public comments. I pray somebody hears it today, and I'm with Bill, put the three minutes back at the end. God bless you.
Virginia Zanowski. Jenny, or Virginia Zanowski. Kristin Lanzana.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Kristin Lanzana, Northwest Palm Bay. I should have probably left two hours ago, it's way past my boys' bedtime, but I'm here tonight as a resident, a taxpayer, and a parent who is deeply concerned about the wave of development projects that are coming before the council. I understand a couple of them have been continued, once again, but the points that I've prepared still stand. Right now, our schools are at capacity. Families are already struggling with long commutes, and adding thousands of new homes will push us far beyond what our education system can handle. For example, Lotus alone is projected to bring over four-hundred-and-fifty new students. Yet our school board estimates say that it would require between, at least three, and up to eleven new schools to support our rate of growth. Altogether, the projects before you tonight could bring nearly one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-three new homes and almost six-hundred new students. Where are those children going to go? Our schools in the area are already at or near capacity, and the reports show they cannot accommodate these newcomers. Meanwhile, developers continue to profit while residents foot the bill. On the Lotus's three hundred acres, the Pete Holding LLC has tax breaks due to the agricultural zoning, meaning they paid roughly the same amount on their hundreds of acres as many of us pay on our quarter-acre lots. And now they want to change the zoning and flip the land for other developers to hopefully stick to the plan, all for profit, essentially leaving Palm Bay taxpayers with the financial consequences. And what's worse is they're marketing the environmentally endangered land Trailhead as if that's some great community benefit. Let's be honest, that's nothing more than a sales pitch for the development. It will only bring more people onto environmentally endangered lands that we should be protecting. This is not responsible growth, it's reckless, and residents know that. Look at any comments on Facebook threads about these projects. The comments after comments say people are saying the same thing, "We don't want this." The only ones pushing it are those who stand to make money. Palm Bay deserves better. We need to put infrastructure first, schools, roads, resources, before developments. We used to have those protections under the Growth Management Act of nineteen-eighty-five, but when it was rolled back in two thousand and eleven, thanks to Rick Scott, it opened the floodgates to the kind of aggressive development we're facing now. Instead of paving over this property, we should preserve it. We have very few attractions in Palm Bay city limits, and for decades, residents have consistently said, "There's nothing to do here." Families leave our city and spend their money elsewhere for entertainment, recreation, culture. Imagine if instead of another subdivision, this property were acquired by the city to become a community landmark, a place like Turkey Creek, with natural trails, educational opportunities, perhaps a museum celebrating Florida's history and ecosystem. That's the kind of project that would benefit generations of residents, not just one developer's bank account. Palm Bay is at a crossroads. Do we approve yet another development that strains our schools and infrastructure, or do we preserve the natural assets that could define our city for the future? Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Judakis. I believe she left. Michael Brietti?
Before I read this, I just want to say, I do support the police. But I do want to remind the chief that we do have bad seeds in this city, and these things need to be dealt with. And that's in every department, that's just not the police. And as far as Lance Fisher goes, the man's not crazy, okay? What you should have done from the beginning is put these two children in a room, all right, and let them hash out their differences. That's what should have been done under Sherman, and yet it continues today. And who's paying for it? The taxpayers. And it's going to continue because of the goddamn lawsuits. First, let me paint a picture here for the audience. We have a white police officer, Rollins, and we have a female black victim, Hatcher, whom was assaulted unjustifiably, made visually clear by the officer's body cam. I've seen this. Come on, who can justify that? That's despicable. Not to mention other videos taken by neighbors apparently not taken into account. We have a dais filled with city officials and have not only justified, but condoned the assault of Ms. Hatcher at the hands of its own police officer, sworn to uphold the law and defend the civil rights of the public it defends. When the Hatcher family reached out to the NAACP for help, they were told by the NAACP President Rodney Edwards, bar number eight-four-one-three-nine, that the NAACP could not help them because he was a staff attorney for who? The city of Palm Bay, whom defends the very officer, Rollins, who racially targeted and assaulted Ms. Hatcher and family. I'm here to speak on the Hatcher family. I don't give a shit about what else goes on. All right, Edwards then deferred Hatcher's family to outside paid counsel? Really, you want them to pay for their civil rights? Come on, really? This goes against the mission statement. He was sworn to uphold citing "fight to uphold racial equality," in part, and "against political views," in part. Last, how could you, Patricia Smith, allow such a conflict of interest on your legal staff? Oh, God, this is so disturbing. Is it convenience of sweeping corruption under the rug? I said in my political run, "I am only running to get the corruption out of this. I don't care about anything else." I want people, individuals, working for this city. God, everyone I've spoke against, you can get on Google, a record search. But yet, Ms. Sherman and HR hire these bad seeds.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Judy Trandle.
I'm stiff. Okay, Judy Trandle, seven-five-one Pebble Beach Avenue. Florida enacted Senate Bill one-eighty, intended to speed up recovery from hurricanes. However, it places severe restrictions on counties and municipalities like ours. For up to three years after a disaster declaration, we can't adopt or enforce new land use rules, zoning changes, or development standards that are stricter than those from July twenty-twenty-four. It makes all stricter updates on our land use, Palm Bay has passed null and void. This freeze applies broadly, even to areas not directly hit, overriding our home rule powers under the Florida Constitution and stifling our ability to adapt to flooding, growth, land use, and protection to wetlands. This bill diminishes the nineteen-sixty-eight Charter Rule and the nineteen-seventy-three Municipal Home Rule Act. SB one-eighty allows any property owner to sue the local government if decisions are made that they dislike. What happened to common sense? As Brevard County and Palm Bay face storm risk along our space coast, we need tools to protect our environment, infrastructure, and residents, not handcuffs from Tallahassee. The best way to fix this is a targeted amendment. Limit SB one-eighty's effects to a strict twelve-to-eighteen-month timeline and apply it only to officially named disaster areas designated by FEMA or the state. This would support quick rebuilding while restoring our local control for long-term planning, ensuring we can enforce updated flood zones, environmental protections, and smart growth without undue state interference. This would restore common sense. So I'm urging you as the city councilman to formally request that Brevard County Legislative Delegation introduce and support this amendment in the twenty-twenty-sixth legislative session. Your voice carries weight, and you certainly have grassroots support to back you. So I'm asking you, please do the right thing. And I want to add, there are twenty municipals and counties in a class-action lawsuit right now.
Thank you.
Ruth Cuffold.
Ruth Cuffold, nine-thirty-five Douglas Street, southeast Palm Bay. Let's get back to a little business here. When can we expect a status every meeting on the infrastructure, on the roads, on everything that is failing in the city? Because there's been another failure on the pipes around here, and I forget where it was, but again, we've been here a long time. All of this infrastructure is failing. We cannot stand any more building, any more rezoning, any more of this stuff. So can we get a status on the agenda every single meeting, giving us that information? Or at least send me a link where I can find it? Because I can't find a status on any of these projects going on, and I can't find a status on what the infrastructure priorities are and where those are falling and when they're going to be done on time or not, so that we can get... I'm a project manager as well. I want a project status. So I also would appreciate a cease and desist in searching the ordinances for silencing citizens. I'm really tired of seeing that stuff. That's ridiculous. Stop doing that. Thank you, Mr. Hammer, for recognizing the traffic jams on Emerson leading into Malabar, all over the place between the hours of six AM and ten AM, and four o'clock to six. I try not to be on the roads during that time, but sometimes it's unavoidable. So now with all this rain that we've been having, it's even more of a challenge. So where can we get status on the activities that the staff is working on as well? So I would appreciate if we could just get some sort of status and get this building stopped... and get this building stopped until it is completed. The new word now is infill building to disrupt current subdivisions. There, we weren't the only one. The, the Ulster property, there was another property as well. All of this infill building because these builders seem to think that we need to have every piece of land improved or, or whatever their definition of it is. Well, they never asked the surrounding communities whether they wanted their input or not. Thank you.
Butcher End.
Butcher Rand, excuse me. Butcher Rand, 219 Trenton Avenue. We all worried about roads and traffic controls and all that stuff. Have we went out on a nationwide search for a traffic coordinator in the city? Or whatever that title was? We don't currently have one, from what I understand. That, and I do want to thank you, Mr. Hammer, for bringing that up. The roads are overstretched as it is. But like, I've already been, talked, I've heard other folks talk about it. We continue to go, okay, let's build 350 houses here. Let's build 200 down here. Let's put 15 over there. Let's put 75 apartment buildings in the city. Where's all that traffic going to go? The timing on the lights, if you could just start there. And Jupiter and Menton is an excellent example. The same hours everybody else is talking about, in the mornings and in the evenings. The light to turn left onto Menton from Jupiter headed northbound, 20 seconds, and the traffic just backs up. Same in the afternoon, same way. If they could just change the timing of some of these lights. Several weeks ago, I had to go to a sleep study because I don't fart and can't sleep like I'm supposed to. So I come back about 6:00 in the morning. Every light on Malabar Road was green all the way home. Didn't have to stop for one. Go out the next morning, red, green, red, green. There's no timing to the lights. I don't know who you have to hire to get that taken care of, or even if our system, the way the lights operate is, is at the age where it can be done. And that's all of that got. Oh, and go LSU.
Jarden.
My name is Jarden. I'm a minor, so I don't think I have to do the address. One of my main concerns is actually addresses because in a time where people have actually gone to the two Democratic lawmakers, I think it was in Minnesota, and murdered them and their dog. I don't really know what the dog had to do with it, but they murdered them at their house. I don't think, in this time of political vulnerability, that everybody should be saying their address. I don't know if it, there's a specific reason we do it here in Palm Bay. And then also, speaking on what they were talking about to Mr. Langivan, about putting the name councilman on his posters, putting a personal, putting the councilman's name on something personal seems kind of, I don't know how to put it. It's very backwards. If we're supposed to be nonpartisan, then we're putting councilman on something personal, then we're not really being nonpartisan. And then also, I don't know, speaking on what somebody said earlier about attractions in Palm Bay, I had heard at one point that you guys were trying to get a Buc-Ee's, but a Buc-Ee's would be a nice stop. And there's a lot of other attractions that I definitely think the city should look into. And speaking on different roads I think should be fixed, I think, I don't think it's a public road. I think it's private property. But it has been a consistent problem in the city. On Riviera and Palm Bay Road at that Dunkin', I don't know if you guys would know what I'm talking about, but there's always been a giant pothole there. There's been a giant pothole there since I was a little kid. My mom's fallen into that pothole before. I think it was fall, I think it was filled in once, ever. So I think we should definitely contact them and try to get at least that pothole filled. And that's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the speaker cards.
Thank you. So we are now on unfinished visit, business item number one. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Staff took direction, as we believe to be direction, from the last council meeting to bring back options to RFA to continue the lease for the Evans Center. So we're here tonight to consider resoliciting proposals through the RFA process for the Evans Center. If council chooses to reissue an RFA, there's a few elements staff would like council to consider and weigh in on just for transparency and clarity. We don't necessarily believe that another mandatory site visit would, should be required if you choose RFA option one, which is an expedited process. We definitely want to work with whoever probable RFA respondents are to disclose as much information about the current facility, including inventory that's there. We also want to provide clarity that, that at this point, all utility costs are the responsibility of the potential respondent, except for lawn maintenance, which that is in the city's maintenance cycle. Clarifying that, similar with the Club Esteem lease that had fallen through, or RFA that had fallen through, there's a $1,000 deductible, or council's free to change that for larger pairs to mechanical HVAC and plumbing systems. Any costs above that would be covered as part of the city's maintenance operations. Clarifying that all kitchen equipment and the grease traps, all other equipment, lights, consumables, are solely the RFA respondents' responsibility for operation, maintenance, servicing. We did provide an original lease and would recommend the same, a one-year term with optional renewals. Proposed was four. And then providing for a lease rate for the Evans Center. Again, staff brought two options forward, working through staff and council. So RFA one is an expedited process with a tentative issue date of 9/25, so a very fast turnaround. We'd walk through potential applicants if they'd like to, at least in one open house style date to be made available. We have RFAs respond in a very short timeframe, which would be 15 calendar days. We do a responsiveness check of a proposal the week of, second week of October, and present applicants, applications to council either at the October meeting or at the latest November 6th, with a mutual start date agreed to by the parties. The second option presented to council is a revamped or, you know, a reconsisted RFA process, which should have more standard, long-term, you know, be a much longer process. Community outreach and events to solicit input, which was done, we'd redo that. Outreach to nonprofits with potential input, again, that was done, would be redone. Revising RFA without any youth restrictions. Conduct walkthroughs for applicants. That tentative date would start somewhere in January, which is long, and that would be mainly because of the time constraints and the holidays. And in that situation, a potential lease likely wouldn't start until March of 2026. So what staff is looking for tonight is direction from council on interest or permission to move, guidance to move forward on option one or two, or any other recommendation council has. And again, just that we consider those items that I read into the staff report.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, speaker cards.
Dr. Stephen Lazarus.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak just briefly here with you guys. Been a long evening, I guess for all of us, so just hang in there for another minute here with me. I am, again, Dr. Stephen Lazarus, as introduced. I'm a professor at Florida Institute of Technology. And I'm actually here to support a local nonprofit, Little Growers Incorporated, who has an interest in, in the Evans Center property. I have to say, you know, good karma. I have had a great experience in the last year and a half working with this group on a Department of Energy grant. It's a million dollar grant. And we've been engaged, we've also been working with Argonne National Lab as well as partners. And we've been engaged in science and citizen science with this community organization. And we funded their work, actually up to $100,000 of their work on a three-year project. And we're working on things like flood mapping, very high resolution flood mapping, heat stress mapping for that community. And for those in the audience, basically that are left anyway, the, I'm sure you're sort of very much aware, aware of issues of rising homeowners insurance. So this has very much of an economic bent to it, especially for economically challenged communities. And again, we're working in the Powell subdivision with Little Growers. We're doing things like drought tolerant landscaping, building, energy efficiency, hence the DOE connection. And we're doing some of this work at Stone Middle. We're working with residences in the neighborhood over there, basically. We've trained about, actually 10, 10 folks on weather stations. We've installed all 10 weather stations, rain gauges. We're doing energy assessments at Stone and at residences over there. And we have a real commitment. And we've been working with, again, Little Growers to do all of this. And they've helped us actually work with the community directly. It's been a great experience. A lot of, a lot of good, a lot of good stuff has come up to now. So what do we want to do here? So we'd like that center, just to be specific here and clear, to serve as a resilience hub. For those who don't know what a resilience hub is, it would serve the community. It's really kind of focused on post-disaster response. So it'd help that community basically act in those situations as a resource center for that community. And we kind of envision it basically as a focal point for a resource distribution, emergency coordination, and community disaster planning, and also providing year-round benefits just as a basic community center. They'd be awesome. As one of several experts at Florida Tech, basically, I am working with Little Growers on the current project. And I'm here to lend my expertise and, and desire to partner with Little Growers to help them reach their dreams. So I appreciate your time. Have a great evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, I, I would like a motion to extend the.
So move. For how long? 11:10?
They typically go in 30-minute segments, so. I need a motion to extend.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
Second.
I got a motion. I got a motion and a second. Motion by Councilman Johnson, signed by Councilman Hammer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. One nay passes 4-1. Okay, carry on.
I have a question for Dr. Lazarus, for maybe Camille Hadley. You're staying with us, sir, till 11:30.
I haven't eat, I haven't even eaten dinner.
Is there, is there a youth component, you think, to your, yeah?
What's that again?
Is there a youth component?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we're doing a lot, we're doing, yeah, good question. Education in the community as well. We actually participated in their earn and learn this summer, basically. And we have several faculty that were involved in that.
If council decides to go with option one tonight, it's the expedited review process, would, would you guys be able to meet those dates? Okay.
Yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next speaker.
That concludes the cards, Mayor.
All right, so what's council's pleasure?
I make a motion to go with option number one.
Second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed by Councilman Johnson. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying, oh, as you were, city manager.
Just some clarification, please, Mayor and council. Was that recommendation including the recommendations for inclusionary items and the meeting schedule as described in option one and read into the staff report in the beginning, on the first page?
Yeah, I was, my motion is intended to go with option number one in its entirety.
Thank you.
That was option number one, yes, sir. So for clarification. She didn't, you didn't have a card, man?
Yes. As an applicant.
We're, we're not taking applications, Ms.
No, no, no. I'm saying as an applicant who was already awarded.
We're, we're go, we already have a motion that we're going with option one. So there's a short period, the shortest period for you to submit an application. Right? So we're not deciding who gets it tonight. But there was no speaker cards, and so we have, right now have a motion and a second.
I did have a speaker card.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right, so go ahead.
I just wanted to address the issue that we brought up. Terry Jones couldn't be here. Connie McClure, Margaret Dehart, and Tyrone Bryant, they sent letters of support to you based on our last council meeting. And so I just want to get clarification as to what happened with Exhibit A. Because Exhibit A was a clear indication that three organizations was awarded and presented to council, and that decision was made. And so I just wanted to get a follow-up from the attorney because we went back and looked at the procurement laws, and there was nothing in there that would address this issue. So we were wondering about an administrative decision and why that was not offered. Because over the last six months since February, we have a waiting list of students. We also have contracts that we started because we were awarded. And so I guess my question is, where did that go?
Did you not speak with the city manager regarding this?
I called to get on the calendar, but I couldn't get on the calendar.
Okay. All right, so Madam Attorney?
I previously spoke with her. And I know Mr. Edwards, who has been handling this, has spoke as well. I believe between our office and procurement that the award was to the party who actually withdrew. They were actually going to go in under that person. And because that's how it was awarded, once it was withdrawn, it was sent, provided back out because, to give anybody else an opportunity because that's how we had, I put it. I am aware of nothing else contrary to that.
In Exhibit A, I submitted to you that the question was asked to prior staff, E.B., I forget her last name. And she wrote back and said, I can assure you that this is not the case because we were asking about one of the organizations being pulled. And she said, I can assure you, this is not the case. Not sure how that rumor got started, but Club Esteem, Crea, and Mecca are all being presented to council on Thursday. So I'm just asking, we were all applicants, and we chose as a group for Club Esteem to be the one to be the lead and to present because of their tenure in the community. But it had nothing to do with them being above us, and that's why on the lease, you had three signatures. The lease has three signatures. It does not have one. So we went back and looked at procurement law just to see, under the Palm Bay City Council, I mean, under Palm Bay law, Chapter 38, and there's nothing to speak to this. So I'm trying to see, why would we be considered subcontractors when the, based on the information that was given to us from staff, we started bringing in funders, we started signing contracts? I mean, we started doing the work since February.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
It's not based upon what staff said, it's how council, when council made the award. And of course, if you're going to have three people involved, which is one of the things I assisted upon and which Mr. Edwards said, the lease was going to be jointly and separately responsible. So everybody that was going to be a part was going to be equally responsible. But once the main party said, you know, I don't want to be a part of this, that's when it fell apart. And that's one of the things we discussed last meeting, which is why we came back with these recommendations, which is, how are we going to move forward? But it's not, ultimately, it's not what staff says, it's what council says.
Okay. Mr. Morton?
I'm in agreement with the city attorney. We had this conversation at the last council meeting. I know everyone was informed that this was happening now for, for several weeks. I think it goes back to early August that we were headed this direction. I think council gave us clear direction in the hearing that it was not awarded to be akin to awarding it to a subcontractor when a contractor has applied. I know there's maybe not satisfaction with that answer, but I'm in agreement with the city attorney, which is why we brought back a community conversation and a new RFA process.
And we weren't, we weren't subcontractors. We were all three applicants. And that is why we, we tried to get clarification from staff who said specifically, Crea, Club Esteem, and Mecca are all being presented to council on Thursday. I mean, either one of us could have brought, could have did our financials. Either one of us could have, I mean, that's.
Did you provide your financials in the meantime?
Mayor, I think we got to get back to the point of order.
Boss.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to table this item and allow them to go through the, maybe the procurement protest ability. We're not going to handle this tonight, so make a motion to table it.
Okay. I got a motion by.
Second.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed by Councilman Hammer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. All right, so now, now we're on item number two, appointments. Deputy Mayor? To the Melbourne Tillman?
Yeah, one appointment to the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District. There's a ranking sheet, and I make a motion to appoint Joseph Hale to that board.
Second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item number one under new business, Ms. Smith.
Give me one second. I've lost my resolution.
Twenty-twenty-five?
One.
New business number one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I lost it in my paperwork, I'm just pulling it back up. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-nine. A resolution of the City of Palm Bay, Bavaria County, Florida, amending resolution twenty-twenty-four dash forty-four, which granted approval of a declaration of covenants and restrictions, also known as the Land Use Restriction Agreement, LORA, for an affordable multifamily rental development in areas zoned for commercial, industrial, or mixed use, in compliance with Section one sixty-six point zero four one five one Florida statutes, known as BILDA, multifamily residential, and CC, community commercial zoning, which properties located west of and adjacent to Bass Pro Shop Drive northeast, in the vicinity south of and adjacent to Executive Circle northeast, and legally described herein, provided for filing of the LORA, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. We've got a comprehensive staff report, but I believe Althea is going to come up and give you the, the high-level report here for the request.
Good evening, very high level. So you probably recall this particular development called BILDA. It was our first live local development that was approved. And since the legislation changed earlier this year, to state that the ten percent would be the cap for the commercial, they are looking actually, and because you did not pass the incentive, the tax incentive last winter, they're looking to reduce the number of affordable units to be provided. It is a request that they can make, and it's up to the board, I mean, the council, to decide if this is something you want to do. There really aren't any ramifications for this, I would guess, on our side, other than they would be deemed a non-conforming use if you didn't change the agreement tonight, and we left the forty percent affordable units, but they only provide it ten percent anyway. They'd still be able to do it, but we deem them as a non-conforming use.
So originally, this live local was supposed to be forty percent, and now they, they're switching it up?
It's, it's forty percent, they can provide a minimum of ten percent, depending on the affordability. If it's a hundred and eighty percent, a hundred and sixty percent, they can do, yes, ten percent of the units.
But right now, they're asking to do what?
Asking to reduce from forty-eight units to ten percent, which would take them down to twelve.
So they have forty-eight units right now that it would be affordable housing?
Yes.
Out of how many? That's total forty-eight?
No, the total number of units that were-
Hundred and twenty.
Out of a hundred and twenty, forty-eight is affordable housing?
Yes, as the LORA stands right now, that you approved.
Okay, that's what we approved.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next.
Cole, Cole Oliver.
Good evening, Cole Oliver, for the applicant, address is nineteen oh one South Harbor City Boulevard, Melbourne, Florida. Real quickly, thank you for tonight. I know it's been a long night for everyone, a lot of emotions in the room. To describe our request, the applicant's request, it, it is, the staff is correct, we're asking to go from the forty, it's, total units are staying at one-twenty, but the portion that would be limited in rent would go from forty-eight units to twelve units. And the basis for that, the why the applicant is requesting it, if you'll allow me a couple of minutes to go back in time on how we got here, in twenty-twenty-three, live local law was passed and signed into law by the governor. The applicant began working with the city to utilize the new state law to bring this project in. At that time, the law did not allow cities to step back from the ad valorem tax exemption, that those units would not be taxed on ad valorem purposes, the forty-eight units that are affordable. Subsequently, my client submitted a site plan to the city. The state law changed that allowed cities to opt out of that ad valorem abatement. My client's site plan was approved, and that was in May, when the governor signed that into law. And in June, the city approved the site plan, and my client began work on the site, investing money. They received loan commitments from financial institutions. Those loan commitments and that work was based on the then-current rule with the city that those units would not face ad valorem taxes, which, I don't know the exact number, but it'll be a couple of thousand dollars each or more per unit that, ad valorem tax-wise, that is now going to be placed on my client's burden to bring this project in. That said, we came before the city in November, I think it was, all five of you were here at that time, and there was a land use restriction agreement that has to, by state law, be filed. And in that, that sets forth the restrictions on the property, that forty percent of the units would meet the live local requirements. And the purpose of that document is that so you, as a governing body, will know that the applicant is following the state law of the forty percent. The council approved that, though, with some arm twisting, and that you didn't really have an option under the way the state law is written, and I respect, you know, the position y'all are put in with that. Subsequent to that, the city in December of that year opted out of the ad valorem option, meaning that the, my client, who had come in and made the investment back decisions based on not paying ad valorem taxes on the portion of the units that are with, is it okay, is the applicant, if I have a couple more minutes, please?
Carry on.
Thank you, sir. So they made their investment back decisions on those taxes not being part of their ongoing burden each year as they brought these in. Those units are being finalized in the next month, month and a half. And the purpose for the request is not to not pay taxes to the city. What they're really requesting is to take the number of units from forty-eight down to twelve. And now the twelve units are all still being taxed, and are the, the full project, the whole hundred and twenty units, will be paying ad valorem taxes. But if they can pull their number of units that are restricted in rent, they can up their rental rates on the other to afford to pay the property taxes now that will be their burden to pay. In the event that the ancillary benefit to the city on that would be that that property itself will probably be valued more by the property appraiser, because now, instead of being forty percent of it rent-controlled, now only twelve, or ten percent of it is rent-controlled, creating more income for the project, which makes the project worth more on the property appraisers, the trim notices that go out. So the city would be collecting additional ad valorem taxes if they can agree with us on this amendment, reducing it from forty percent to ten percent. I do have the applicant here with me tonight, if there are questions, but that is our request, is some relief from the, I'll say, the, the rules changed on us between when we started construction and when we're finishing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speaker cards?
Bill Batten.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street. This is a case of what was more important to the, to the city council, affordable housing or revenue to pay for our infrastructure? That's what, that's what they're looking at. Unfortunately, live local muddied the waters that made everything a little bit more confusing. So I, I called and I got a response back from Growth Management today, and they didn't have the actual numbers, but I was curious, what we're looking at, we're trying to say, we're going to help forty-eight people have affordable housing, or how much are we looking at in difference from tax revenue that we would have been bringing into the city? Unfortunately, they weren't able to provide me that number, but they were able to explain what the situation was going to be. So as I'm looking at this contract, what they say for the affordable housing, you have to fall, fall in the tax bracket of eighty to a hundred percent of the median income for the, for the City of Palm Bay. Well, for me, Bill Batten says, that's more than I made in my entire life, and I'm at eighty, and I'm, I'm already a rich person. But the fact that they're saying forty percent, they would have had forty percent in that median income, we don't know what they're actually going to be charging of rent. So they're saying, well, we're going to be charging market value, or we're going to be providing a rent that's affordable. It goes back down to which one was more important to you as the council, having the tax revenue come in, or having affordable housing to come in? Me personally, because I'm the doubting Tom, I got my tax form right here. You broke the cap, because you didn't have enough money to pay for your income, for your, for your infrastructure. So you broke the cap. So let's see, let's make some low-income housing over here, where we don't collect any revenue on, or let's have the tax revenue that's generating in, because it's on a commercial property that generates the tax revenue to help lower my tax bracket. Thank you very much.
Next speaker?
Concludes the cards, Mayor.
Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion to deny this.
I got a motion.
I'll second.
And I got a, I got a motion by Councilman Landerman, signed by Councilman Hammer. Councilman, let's go in order. Oh, Councilman Landerman made the, the motion, carry on.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you very much. Yeah, quite frankly, this was a project that used state law to go around the authority of this council, to go around how we normally do things, to take away commercial property, and in essence, quite frankly, screw the city over. So, yeah, I think you got a lot of audacity to come here right now and ask us to now change it in your benefit. I'm going to be a hard no on this. It's such a bad precedent that we say, hey, you can come in and use live local, take whatever property you want, build something for you, oh, and then you can come back a few months later, and you can have it amended to be in your favor. We passed the, we, hey, we passed the, the tax incentive regarding live local right after this project, because of this project. So that's where I stand on the item, gentlemen.
Thank you. Councilman Hammer?
I'm going to reflect what he said as well. I don't think this project would have passed if the guy that was sitting in the seat before me thought this was going to be twelve, twelve dwellings. And, and I'm going to echo his words tonight with that, and that's it.
Thank you. I was a no on this, you know, I had a principle, because I didn't agree that this was forced on us, so anyone else? Okay, I've got a motion for denial by Councilman Landerman, signed by Councilman Hammer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're now on item number two, consideration. Mr. Morton?
Before you tonight is a consideration of an appointee to serve on the Evaluation Selection Committee for solicitation of state lobbying services.
Thank you. You know, I'll throw my name in the hat, gentlemen, to, to work on this. Councilman Johnson?
I, I would like to as well. Now, I'll speak briefly on it. So I, I was the council member on the last time when we ended up with who we have right now, Sunrise Consulting. Previously, we had a different lobbyist, and which we didn't get any funding from in the previous years. But what the process showed me was during the process of being, you know, supposed to be impartial, I was being reached out to by state legislative officials to try to get me to support one person over the other. So whether it's, if it's not me, whoever it is, you have to stand true to the process, because it was attempted to be manipulated, and I'm glad I stuck with who was the best candidate, because, because of the Sunrise Consulting, we've gotten so much more funding from the state level than we ever have before, than we ever have before. And I, I, I like Sunrise Consulting, but if somebody else comes better, then so be it with them. But whoever it is, if it's not me, don't let outside sources or entities influence you in going against what you see as right in regards to the tabulation of the scores. So that's all I have, Mayor. I just remember from four years ago when it happened, and I was, you know, I was thrown off guard by it, but I, I stayed true with what I knew, and it, it's worked out tremendously over the past four years, so that's all.
Copy that, sir. I, I believe the same thing, to be very impartial in this process because of different results. It shouldn't be gimme. So I, I understand, I was here when you were assigned that, that project, so I, I'm throwing my name in the hat as well, but however this council wants to move, I'm, I'm good with that as well. So anyone else?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mayor Medina to serve on the Evaluations Selecting Committee.
I'll second it.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the, for, Madam Clerk?
I just want to confirm, I have in my notes to appoint an alternate as well.
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Johnson as the alternate.
I'll second. Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed by Mayor Medina. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're now on council reports. Councilman Landerman?
All I've got is, we did our, we, we talked about our state appropriations a meeting or two ago, and one thing that was different this year that we didn't have on it this year that we did have last year, was last year we also had some policy items, like live local, that we agreed upon, that we would tell our lobbyists, we want them to kind of go after. So I was, I was just wondering if we wanted to bring that back as well and add that.
Yeah, I kind of love that idea, amending that, like, we should, we should have never been involved in live local, but I, I wanted to see if we could add the SB one eighty that was brought up by Judy today, and, and kind of like, set a timeframe to that, that, you know, that, that work. So I'd be amendable to that, Councilman Landerman, and I, I appreciate you bringing it up.
So last year, it, it was kind of happening right as we had new council members coming on, so I don't know if that was something that, because there was already kind of a couple items on there, and then we also added some. Were the couple items that were on there already, were they, were they put on by staff, were they put on by the council members who had already been on before the election? How did-
I think that was part of the discussion all along. We, we didn't want to be part of live local from the, from the offset. And then the, the act of it was, we, we are, we should be excluded, because there was a consensus of like Port Saint Lucie, you know, GDC Development Cities, Port Charlotte was another one that would have been excluded, we were trying to get to be excluded from the law altogether.
Yeah.
It, it went down in flames, sir.
Yeah, that was good, I'm just wondering how the, how the process works. But yeah, so I think if we're good, bring that up as a new business item, and going into the legislative cycle, all right.
Thank you. Councilman Hammer?
First thing, I want to say thank you to Althea for stepping up. It is, it is a lot on your plate, and thank you for stepping up and doing, doing your part for our team. Second, I want to say thank you to Matt and to the staff. I've, I've put a few things on their plate, and they have soared appropriately, as I would expect. Third, I'm, I'm hoping I can get people to understand that this life isn't promised. I've dealt with some, some loss in my life, and it's been family that, that I've loved more than anything. And they've been sick, and, you know, you kind of see it coming. But there's no promise you're going to make at home. And I unfortunately had to learn that this last week. It's literally changed my whole life, how I look at every single person that I ever meet. Might be the last time you meet him. Might be the last time that you get to say how you feel, tell him you care about him, fix bad relationships, mend things that could be mended. If I could get, if I can get everybody to make a prayer for the Taylor family. He was ejected from his boat and lost at sea. I just, it's, it's really hurt my heart, it's changed me as a person. And I just hope I can get everybody to, as you're saying your prayers, put one in for him and his family. He had two kids. And, and the crazy thing that I see is I see everybody saying they're his best friend. Kind of shows what kind of person he was. This, I mean, this dude would drop everything for you. And that's the kind of person that's rare in this, in this world. And, I mean, you can lose him anytime, anytime, a simple fishing trip, a simple fishing trip. And, and I want everybody to know how much I appreciate you, your time up here, your, your, everything that you do, the heart that you put into this. This is a thankless job, but I want you guys to know I'm thankful for everything that you guys do because I know how hard this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Johnson?
Councilman Hammer, thank you for that. That's, we have to be very intentional with every human interaction because you never know. So thank you for sharing that. We will be praying for your family and the Taylor family. Thank you for stepping into the role now, appreciate you for that. Thank you for clarifying the record as well on which one was, you know, approved by planning and zoning, which one wasn't. Thank you, Chief, for stepping into your role. I know it's not easy. We've been under the same scrutiny. Welcome to the club, Deputy Chief. You got to smile, you got to smile. But, um, but appreciate everybody out here, and that's all. And I appreciate you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, everybody up here. So let's, let's get Deputy Mayor home.
Deputy Mayor?
I was going to repeat my speech from earlier. I'll make a motion to appoint Douglas Hook to the Sustainability Advisory Board. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I'll end with this. Councilman Hammer, you're absolutely right, man, you just touched my heart, number one. And in saying that, tomorrow isn't promised, right? But it's what we do today to live our lives and how we represent not only each other, but everyone out there, for everyone that's out there. You have a mayor that prays for you, doesn't know you, but he loves you, and I love everybody on his dais, even those of us that may be hard-headed at times, including myself. But I love you all. Mr. Morton?
Nothing, thank you.
Madam Smith?
No, sir.
This meeting's-